Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today for the joint state senate hearing with regards to the state of maternal mortality and morbidity rates here in New York. I am New York State Senator Leah Webb, Chair of Women's Issues in the Senate, and I'm going to turn over to my colleagues to introduce themselves in just a moment. Just some quick logistics. I know I better do that for those who are here. The exits are at the top of the staircase and at the bottom of the staircase. Also, we do have written testimony from a number of folks, and so we appreciate that. We will begin and end today's hearing by 2:00. However, the conversation that we are having today, I think we all would agree, needs to continue beyond today. And so I want to thank all of you for joining us for this very important conversation and in large part, policy work that needs to continue to grow. And so I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues to introduce themselves. So in no particular order, I will go to my right. Senator Rivera?
Good morning, everyone. State Senator Gustavo Rivera, 33rd District in the Bronx and Chair of the Health Committee in the Senate. And I'll just briefly say this is definitely an issue that we have that is not new. It is unfortunately incredibly serious here in the state of New York. I remember a few years ago, though my tenure has been long, I've been here for 15 years, and I do remember that we have passed before the Maternal Mortality Review Board. I know that we have, this has been a constant issue that we have dealt with. So I'm glad to be here with my colleagues today to talk about it and certainly hear from you about some of the things that we might be able to do legislatively or administratively to be able to continue to deal with the issue. So thank you for being here this morning. Looking forward to the testimony today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Rivera. And to my left, Senator Prasad.
Good morning, everyone. I am Roxanne Prasad. I am the Senator representing the 19th Senate District. And this, I chaired a Social Services Committee. And this is a topic that is a topic of conversation in my district because of the inequities that are occurring and we have, the disparities in healthcare that are drastically affecting the constituency that I serve. So I want to thank Senator Webb for deciding to have us come together to have this conversation. This is a conversation that we must have. We've not had it enough. And as Senator Webb said, today is not the end of the conversation. But it's not just to have a conversation. It's what will we be doing after the conversation? Having the conversation is fine, but we have to change what is occurring in our districts. But, so again, I want to thank you all, and I appreciate you all being here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Prasad. Also on my left, we are joined by our colleague Senator Bino.
Good morning. Senator Sheila Bino, hailing from Nassau County, serving communities including Hempstead, Westbury, Newcastle, Freeport, Roosevelt. Many of those communities are actually struggling to get access to healthcare and maintain services as it relates to Nassau University Medical Center. And as a county legislator, I worked on maternal mortality issues and introduced bills. Unfortunately, did not get the opportunity to have them vetted on the floor. But this is important work. This is an important conversation regarding the statistics with maternal mortality. Nassau County is just slightly below the Bronx in its mortality rates. And so many people think Nassau County is an affluent area. It's an area that has pockets of poverty and high segregation. And so this conversation is very, very timely, and I look forward to hearing from some of the experts in the field and working alongside you to advance change. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Bino. We will be joined in a short bit by Senator Sam R. Bruck. And so for myself, my region, I represent the southern tier, which includes Broome, Cortlandt, and Tompkins County in the 52nd Senate District. I wanted to, before we bring up our first panel, I always like to level set and give background. I know we are, in some regard, preaching to the choir, but as I often remark, as a choir, we have to sing better. And so it is important that we fully understand that some of the statistics that I learned of even most recently continues to underscore why this conversation, why this work is so important. So a couple of things. A 2023 United Nations report found that structural racism and sexism contributes to maternal health disparities across income levels. Black women in particular, in the Americas, are disadvantaged through less access to proper care and accurate health information and inherent biases in the healthcare system. Folks may be familiar with a report that our Department of Health released last year looking at maternal mortality rates in the state. And so there are a number of both state and federal resources that are being dedicated to this, but I want to lift up some additional considerations as it pertains to this issue here in New York. So in 2019, the CDC, also known for the Center for Disease Control, provided the New York State Department of Health with a five-year grant and technical assistance to study maternal mortality between 2018 and 2020. And so during that time period, there were a total of 386 pregnancy-associated deaths in New York. Our state comptroller noted that 19.3% of pregnancy-associated deaths per 100,000 live births. This represents the highest total mortality rate in the state since 2015. And for all of those pregnancy-associated deaths, 66% of individuals were Medicaid recipients, 60% had a high school diploma or less. And for all of those deaths, 72% were also unmarried. More specifically, 121 of those pregnancy-associated deaths were directly attributed to pregnancy or pregnancy-related deaths, and 65% of individuals who suffered those deaths were Medicaid recipients, as I mentioned before. And although 14.3% of the live births in New York were black individuals, 42.1%, being told 14.3% of the total live births in New York were within communities identified as black, however, 42.1%, that community made up 42.1% of the pregnancy-related deaths in that time period. Now, you may be wondering why I'm sharing these stats. It is because we also know that, from the report I mentioned a moment ago, that the Department of Health also recognizes that with these growing disparities, one of the statistics that really just hit me even deeper is that more than 73% of those deaths were preventable. And so you begin to wonder, well, with those type of statistics, why is it that we are continuing to see not only these disparaging outcomes, but what can we do about it? And so these disparities become even more pervasive when you factor in issues such as maternal care deserts. Rural communities see this quite a bit. And so I know from our panels today, we're going to do a deeper dive. The last thing I'll say to further set some context, as a state, we continue to take action, most certainly here in the Senate. Several of my colleagues and myself have introduced bills, several of which have been signed into law, to try to close this gap and essentially end these disparities and address this challenge. However, we have quite a bit of work to do. The other piece is that, as I mentioned at the top of the conversation, there are federal supports that we have received. However, those federal supports are most certainly in jeopardy, and so we will most certainly unpack that as well. So with that being said, I would like to call up our first panel, and we are joined by representatives from the Department of Health. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Joanne Morn, who is the Executive Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Health, and Dr. Kirsten Segenthaler. If I said your last name properly, please get me all the way together. Department of Health Director, specifically the Division of Family Health. And while you all are taking your seats, I'll just also explain the timing. So for this opening panel, Department of Health, I know you are quite involved on this issue, so you will have a total of 10 minutes to share your testimony with regards to this issue. And then our subsequent panels, each witness will have three minutes, and there will be questions and sharing, of course, after testimony, so we can have more time. Okay, so I will turn it over to you. Thank you both for being here with us.
Thank you very much, and good morning. And again, thank you for the opportunity to join you, Senators Webb, Prasad, Bino, and Rivera. Obviously, we share, and what you spoke of this morning, as it relates to the discussion of maternal mortality, and understand this certainly as a critical topic and issue. My name is Joanne Morn. I'm the Executive Deputy Commissioner at the New York State Department of Health. I'm joined this morning by my colleague, Dr. Kirsten Segenthaler, the Department's Director for the Division of Family Health. Dr. Segenthaler is also the subject matter expert for this morning's hearing. The Department remains deeply committed to improving maternal health outcomes and eliminating health disparities. We have a comprehensive approach that collectively aligns our role as a payer, a public health department, and a convener with community-based agencies as well as clinical stakeholders. Funding, as you mentioned, has been awarded to reduce unnecessary cesarean births, provide training such as for fetal heart monitoring for providers and nursing staff, expand doula programs and services, and reduce identified disparities in maternal health through racial equity, implicit bias, and trauma-informed care trainings for all hospital staff. This year's budget includes $16 million in annual state funding for public health initiatives to address maternal and infant mortality, and also recognizing that these state funds are matched by federal dollars. Maternal mortality rates have more than doubled in the U.S. since 2001. In New York State specifically, we saw the rates peak between 2008 and 2010, and the rates declined to 18.1 per 100,000 births in, through 2016 to 18. While the rate has since increased to 20.5 per 1,000 births in 2019 and 21, we do note that this is still less than the rest of the U.S. on a national level, which is at 25.5 deaths per 100 births. Let me underscore, though, that even in acknowledging that, we understand these rates are unacceptable. There is a critical influence of economic, societal, and environmental factors on maternal health. You spoke of this earlier. A national maternal vulnerability index has shown that in New York State, individual and community environments, as well as social determinants of health, are the largest influences on negative maternal health outcomes. We know and acknowledge that there is a workforce shortage. There is a shortage of clinicians, be that obstetricians, midwives, nurses, and anesthesiologists. Of 47 counties in New York State, there are fewer than 10 obstetricians per 100,000 population. Of those 47 counties, 10 of those counties have fewer than six. The Department of Health recognizes there is a profound disparity in outcomes for black birthing people. In fact, black birthing people who are four times more likely to experience a pregnancy-related death than white individuals giving birth in the United States. Established in 2019, the New York State Maternal Mortality Review Board reviews every pregnancy-associated death to improve maternal outcomes and prevent future deaths. Almost three-quarters of all pregnancy-related deaths were determined by the board to have some or a good likelihood of being preventable. Examples of factors that contributed include a lack of continuity of care, the quality of care, and the persistence of structural racism. In response, the Department of Health implements the New York State Perinatal Quality Collaborative. This focuses on quality improvement projects. It is a voluntary program through which we have been able to engage with up to 75% of birthing facilities on any one project to develop evidence-based or informed quality improvement initiatives. We've adapted the following bundles to date. Care for pregnant and postpartum people with substance use disorder, safe reduction of primary cesarean birth, New York State Birth Equity Improvement Project, and the Neonatal Intensive Care Unit, or NICU, Equity Project. Additional investments have supported, or support, $4.5 million for regional perinatal centers. This is for the purpose of training and support for regional birthing hospitals and centers. The three home visiting programs that provide periodic visits to assess pregnant and newly-parenting families for their health and their social support needs, as well as provide information, education, and referral. A partnership with SUNY to support maternal mortality initiatives and the Perinatal Quality Collaborative through continuing education opportunities for clinicians. Medicaid benefits have been expanded to improve maternal health outcomes as well. In recent years, we have increased Medicaid reimbursement rates, both for midwives and for doulas, extended Medicaid coverage from 60 days to 12 months postpartum, regardless of immigration status, expanded coverage for doula and nutrition and lactation counseling, and the opportunity of remote patient monitoring services. Funding has expanded reimbursement for non-invasive prenatal testing, updated the perinatal care standards for all New York State Medicaid providers, implemented a value-based payment initiative to decrease low-risk cesarean deliveries. We also do recognize, though, that as stated, our work continues. The Department is grateful for the legislators' focus on improving maternal and infant health outcomes in this state. We look forward to continuing partnership to address the complex social and medical challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead. Were you going to add something to? Oh, okay. We'll get right into it. So I'll open the discussion now for my colleagues to ask questions.
Thank you both very much. You know, you talk about in 2019, all of, since 2019, the things that you've been doing. What do you think is still causing us not to see the fruits of that, what you've been doing? Because it's still, we have not made any real significant changes in, you know, mortality.
No, thank you, Senator, for that question. I do understand the frustration, and we are here to support all New Yorkers and want to have this be, you know, a zero event. It is complex, and so it's not limited to just the clinical setting, and it's not even limited here to New York State. It's a national issue. As mentioned by Senator Webb and also Executive Director Morn, we see that there are complex social issues that are really causing these challenges. And some of the underlying reasons for prevention, or reasons we could prevent or avoid death, are things like individuals knowledgeable about symptoms, right, of concern after birth or during pregnancy, as well as those individuals who bring forward their concerns really being heard and believed and followed. And that, some of that is linked to, you know, implicit bias or racism and sexism. Not that, not of the individuals wanting to do that, but that they have, they have learned through their training and their careers, and also through the influence of media and the way that, you know, they've learned how to interact with the world. And so I think these are just really complex issues. I do think the investments we've made have made a difference. As was mentioned, the rates in the United States have more than doubled, but New York State has actually declined overall and largely, you know, not seen the increases that might have happened if we hadn't, you know, made the investments that we had. So it's a very complex topic. We are working, as was mentioned, on multi-factors. We're working in the community. We're working with individuals who are pregnant. We're working with the clinicians who provide the services, and then the systems that provide their care, whether it be the hospital or the payer. And so we think, you know, this isn't easily solved, but we want to continue to do this work.
Okay, thank you. Just to note, the timer was with regards to the 10 minutes. We can keep going.
That was a free question.
That was a nice opening.
Don't do that to us down here. Yeah, it's testing us. You talked about the workforce and the shortage. What are we doing as a state to change that? We know in rural communities, they are suffering. We know that in certain impoverished communities, the healthcare system, you know, will have doctors leaving because we're not paying them adequately for them to stay in practice. You know, what are we doing?
Sure, and this is not limited to clinicians who provide services for pregnancy, of course. This is a broad issue, and it's not limited to New York. There's a larger national healthcare shortage. I'll speak, you know, specifically to some of our activities. I mean, we are working with Medicaid, and as you heard, we have expanded services to provide greater supportive care for the individual, so ensuring that it, all of the burden doesn't fall on the clinician. So we have expanded community health workers. We have lactation, nutrition, and doula, you know, certainly of importance. And so we are trying to create more of a universe of care around our pregnant and birthing people. And then for our clinicians, you know, we have worked with, through Medicaid, to increase reimbursement for midwives so that it's close to parity with obstetricians. It's at about 95%. And we are doing other activities currently and in the near future to provide incentives to clinicians for, say, timely postpartum visits, or for systems that decrease cesarean deliveries among low-risk births.
What are you doing, if I can just interject, what are you doing to educate women about cesarean births? You know, we, we hear often, and I have legislation about it, where it's forced on women, and they are not given adequate information. They're not taught about what is going to happen, and hence they are rushed into this. What are you doing?
So we have community-based programs with community health workers and nurse-family partnership in those areas that have had the least investment. And really, they work with individuals during their pregnancy to make sure that they understand, you know, their rights, how to talk, questions to ask, make sure that they're receiving their prenatal care. It's not universal, but it is certainly a focused investment in specific communities. We also are working a lot with the clinicians. In terms of reaching all pregnant people, it's very difficult. I mean, we have over 200,000 births every year. We don't necessarily know who is pregnant at the moment they're pregnant, so we can't, as a Department of Health, intervene. So we really rely on our community-based partners and our clinicians. So we work with the American College of Obstetrician and Gynecologists as close partners. We work with Greater New York Health and Hospital Association. We work with our, you know, individual clinicians who are on our Perinatal Quality Collaborative. Right now, we're working on a cesarean delivery quality improvement initiative, and so these are the things we're trying to tell them, you know, talk with them about and try to help understand why are there higher rates of cesarean deliveries in New York State than the rest of the nation? Why are black individuals more likely to have a cesarean delivery, since we do know cesarean deliveries are associated with a higher risk of maternal morbidity and mortality? However, we do, we also know that cesarean deliveries do save lives, right? And so they're not bad inherently. They just need to be used appropriately, where the risk benefit is the greatest, right? And so that, it is, it is a complex issue, and so we are working on that. The other thing we've done for social media-wise is we've run two, and we're running our third campaign called Hear Her, H-E-A-R, H-E-R. And this is from the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, and it's a really powerful set of advertisements to empower women, especially black women, to know that their voices are important. If they have concerns, they should bring them to people. They shouldn't try to, you know, be strong. They should, they should make sure to share their concerns about their pregnancy or their postpartum symptoms, and that the clinician should hear her. So we are doing, we have a couple of different opportunities that we're working on to address that issue.
And so finally, so before my colleague pulls the, you know, the hook on me, you talked about the CDC's campaign. Are you concerned in any way that the CDC funding will no longer be there for these kinds of campaigns?
I just will share one thing quickly. That Hear Her campaign was developed by the Centers for Disease Control, but we're using our funding to run it.
Oh.
So that, in that case, but just for the broader question.
Okay. Thank you very. Thank you. So certainly, we recognize the inherent risks with the transition of the federal government. That said, one of the things that the Commissioner, Commissioner McDonald for the Department of Health noted during his budget hearing is that the initiatives, the work, the programming, and support that we offer is also based on the commitments of the federal government. And so at this time, we continue to move forward with the work that we do. We also look forward to an opportunity to continue to partner with you as we look to ensure that we have the capacity to provide the safety and support to individuals as it relates to maternal mortality.
Thank you. Other colleagues who want to ask questions? Go ahead, Senator Bino.
Good morning. So you went through a pretty lengthy list of really heavily-weighted initiatives that you've introduced, and I'm going to have some questions about, well, let's start there then. What do you think is the most effective initiative that you're seeing the most value from its investment into that procedure or process? Which is the one that you think we should invest more in or broaden it?
So that's a complex question, because it is, it is, it affects all the levels, right? And so as, as someone who is really part of the Office of Public Health, I believe, you know, I really like prevention. And so we really would like to engage at sort of the global community level and really helping people even before they become pregnant, right? And so that, that with, that requires working with a lot of people, you know, continuously over time and addressing really big societal issues. So among the things that we do specifically, we tend to be, rightfully so, focused more in the clinical space. And so I do think our Perinatal Quality Collaborative that was mentioned is a really powerful investment for what is, has been historically a relative small amount of money. And so what that does is, for example, the current one that we're working on is a birth equity improvement project, and we're actually looking at systemic racism and bias in the hospital, with the hospitals. And it's a voluntary process. We do work with the hospitals that represent about 75% of the births, so we have good voluntary coverage. The hospitals are not provided any funding to participate. They do participate because they want high-quality outcomes. And so that one, we are really looking at a system level. We're looking at a clinical level, and we're working at a patient, you know, experience. And so at the system level, hospitals have really mapped out what are their policies and practices for hiring? What are their policies and practice for looking at data disaggregated and engaging What are their policies and practice for looking at data disaggregated and engaging the community? At the clinician level, they're getting professional development as well as coaching and mentoring to understand how bias could impact the way that they deliver care. And then at the patient level, we're collecting data from the patient-reported experience. We have a brief 10-question survey in, I think, 16 languages that patients will provide, will answer on the way out. And it has five major components. One is autonomy, like how much did they feel like they had autonomy? Did they experience any discrimination? Were they asked questions? Could they ask questions? And what was the sort of, were they treated differently in, in different aspects? And so we have that, we have that patient-directed information and we're looking at that every single month. And we're providing that back to the hospital at an individual level and then we're looking at it in aggregate way. And so hospitals can actually see if they've made changes, have those changes resulted in positive outcomes for the patient's experience? And then sort of layered on top of that, we're looking at what are some of the outcomes of cesarean deliveries? Like, are there any changes or reductions in cesarean deliveries among low-risk births? So I think the Perinatal Quality Collaborative is a very powerful tool that we have and has evidence both globally in the framework, but also specifically in prior perinatal quality collaborative initiatives. We've done on hemorrhaging where we've, we had great outcomes related to hemorrhaging. Thank you for allowing me to further highlight that one.
Thank you for doing so. And it actually teed up what was gonna be my first question, which was regarding implicit bias and the trainings in hospitals. And I wanted to know whether we have considered baking it into a requirement for a licensure here in the, in the state as opposed to making it voluntary at the hospital level?
Thank you for that question. So I think certainly as we, as we engage in this discussion, one of the things we recognize is that while the Department of Health sits here today representing and speaking to the framework and the commitment to maternal mortality, it is certainly the responsibility of multiple spaces for us to fully address individuals as whole persons. So when we talk about implicit bias in, in this example, I think what's really important is that, yes, in order for implicit bias training and the other forms of training we've talked about, including looking at trauma-informed care, it has to start from the beginning. So when I say the beginning, what I mean is that it has to start during the time of training. And so there have been multiple opportunities in different forums, addressing maternal mortality and other areas of concern that provide this training. What I think is important, though, is understanding that when we talk about licensure of practitioners, that that falls to the State Education Department. And so the continued partnership and collaboration that the Department of Health has with the State Education Department and other state agencies provides for the opportunity of, of looking at what are the core needs in order for us to address and reduce mortality.
Thank you. And then my last question is, how have you been able to work with counties? At state level, we appreciate all of this, but we need to get granular and get into some of these counties where they don't have full understanding or appreciation for the maternal mortality rates and where there's a lack of, you know, even data collection at the bare minimums to determine how they might course correct. Have you been able to interface with them?
Yes, we have. So at one level, we have the New York State Association of County and Health Officials and they are great partners to the Department of Health and they represent the county health. And so we, we do work with them and they are very interested in maternal mortality. So we're able to provide information to them and to present to them and the county health officials. The other thing that we do is we, we work directly with the local health departments. So for example, tomorrow I'll be speaking with Suffolk County and their Subcommittee on Maternal Mortality and so, virtually. And so we, we do seek out and have partnership with our local health departments and try to support them. They, they can, you know, they do this work through their local health work as well. And it's, it's not just with the hospital, it's also what they do in the community. So a number of local health departments have home visiting programs, so they will actually provide sort of continuity of care from pregnancy through postpartum, often using a combination of local county funding. But there may be grants, they may have participated in some of the grants that we have as well.
Okay, I said the last, this is, that was my second to last question. So are they pushing their plans up to the state level for the purpose of you reviewing them to see if there's any deficiency in how they're approaching maternal mortality and for the purpose of making sure that in some way there is comprehensive and, and some, what I want to say is, uniformity in how communities might be approaching this at the basic level? We understand that each community will have its own characteristics and traits and there'll be some specific initiatives that need to be addressed. But do we have a benchmark for what, at a minimum, county should be doing for the purpose of turning the corner on maternal mortality?
We're here as partners to the counties and collaborators, really to, to help them. There isn't a requirement that they provide any kind of plan to us. Many of them do have very comprehensive plans that take into account their local resources as well as their local populations. And they do often invite us or share that information with us. We have not, we have not been called to provide specific sort of standards or benchmarks related to that.
She said it was okay, so I'm gonna ask one more, if you don't mind. Could that fall under the charge of the Department of Health as your structure is currently, you know, enforced? Could you require that? Because I will speak plainly, for Nassau County, I don't think they're doing enough. I've, over the years, been trying to get them to do more. Their death rate for maternal mortality is 30.1 for every 1,000 deaths and that was an old number. We can't even get a new number from them. I'm really interested in seeing how we might put some teeth into a process that will require counties that are just turning a blind eye to this issue. And I would like to know what you think your role at the Department of Health could be in those circumstances.
So what I would say is that certainly there's always the space and we, and create the space for the dialogue and the conversation. What I also would point, point out too, though, is sort of continuing the conversation of looking at the opportunities of partnership. Now, one of the responsibilities, certainly for the department, and one of the things that we take seriously is the use of data and evidence-based information in order for us to make decisions related to funding and related to areas of concern that need to rise as far as priority. If we were, if we were looking at the data and we were recognizing significant disparities, then yes, there, there is space for us to look at how we work with local health departments and other partners within that community to determine next steps.
We'll be talking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I also want to acknowledge that we have been joined by Senator Cordell Clear. If you just wanna introduce yourselves.
She said, I'm Senator Cordell, thank you, Cordell Clear. I represent the 30th District, which includes Harlem, West Harlem, a significant portion of East Harlem, El Barrio, small portion of the Washington Heights and some of the Upper West Side. And I'm just looking at these, the data that's in front of me and I know it's been a stubborn problem. It's not broken down certainly by district, but Black women continue to die at alarming rates. And I just want to know, we have put some things in place, measures have been put in place, but what have you seen that is working? What is the Department of Health doing more of to really combat this issue of maternal morbidity? Is that okay?
Sure, I can help. And I'll just share, related to the, the data, both at the county and the district level, that maternal mortality is, as you can imagine, a very sensitive topic. It's, it's important to protect that information. These deaths often do make the media. And so the Department of Health does not break down maternal mortality by county or district because the numbers are so small, fortunately, they're too high, but they're fortunately small, that by disclosing it at that lower, smaller level would be essentially disclosing all the, the information that the department has on them. And so that, that's one of the reasons we don't release maternal mortality data at that granular detail. And that might be why Nassau County, for example, is not able to provide county-level data. But we are working on deeper analysis of our morbidity data because that unfortunately is a, is a more common impact. And so we are looking at-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm not looking for like, you know, names and-
Yeah.
But just, you know, exactly where it's happening, why it may be happening, reasons, I mean, comprehensive data so that we can address. I don't, I don't want anything, I understand there's rules, we don't want to break any confidentiality rules or anything like that or put it out there, but are we looking at the data at that level?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
And there are regional data releases. And so we, in, in the New York State Department of Health website, health.ny.gov, if you search on maternal mortality, there's a whole section on maternal mortality and there are reports in there. And that has the reports with a lot of that data that are included. In terms of where it's happening, maternal mortality is happening across the state. It's not limited to one region. We do see higher rates downstate in New York City than some of the upstate areas. We also do see a greater racial disparity, as was mentioned at the top of the hour, you know, with Black women dying four times more likely from a pregnancy-related, where the pregnancy actually was an underlying cause of the death. And so there are, we are looking at that information. And it's important to note, there are two kind of ways that we do things. One is the Maternal Mortality Review Board, but that, as you've noted, is much later. It's well after the death because we, we look at one year post-pregnancy and then we have to collect data from coroner, from, you know, primary care doctors, from the hospitals. Not all deaths happen in the hospital, so we have to, you know, get alerted once the information comes through, you know, the vital statistics and then we have to begin our access. So that, that process is really intended to do the deep dive and the quality improvement and what are the recommendations to change, you know, and prevent deaths. If a death does happen in a hospital, for example, as a regulatory body, the Department of Health has a team of individuals who will actually go pretty immediately onsite and will do an intense record review with the hospital and will, will require changes sometimes or if it was a very severe issue, you know, they might even pause birthing, but that would be, you know, that, it would be a very extreme case. And so the Department of Health itself does have these two processes. One, that's very immediate and it's centered on the, the hospital itself. That information is protected and that's really because we want the hospitals to do that really intensive look and, and determine what were the issues and to, to address those issues. And so we do work very closely with that team. And then we take that information plus all the other information and we use that in the, the sort of lengthier process, which is the Maternal Mortality Review Board, which results in recommendations for the state and for the hospital system, for the individual clinicians and at the community level to make change.
Thank you for that. Just one other quick question and it may be in here, so forgive me if it is, but are you seeing that more deaths occur in hospitals or post, or later on in the year? Because I know this covers, these numbers cover within a year, right?
Right, within, within the year. So the, I don't remember the specific breakdown by hospital, I just didn't bring that piece of data with me, so we can follow up with you. But in the reports that we have, we have both the timing of the death, whether it was during pregnancy, during birth, from the moment of birth through 42 days and then from 42 days, you know, to one year, as well as the underlying causes and some of the information that you're asking. So it would be better for me to give you a more precise answer than to try to remember.
That's fine. I'm happy for you to get back to me. And if you just talk a little bit about the difference that doulas have been making, have y'all been monitoring that where it exists? How much of it? And then is that one of the recommendations that you look to when you see spikes or where you see areas where this is happening, if there's in a relationship?
Yeah, so some of the reason, the major reasons for prevention, you know, that we could avoid deaths really relate to continuity of care. So there's this idea that's really not been implemented in the nation yet, but we are working with partners to really try to understand, which is this maternal medical home. So we understand a medical home, right, is where for an individual who's not pregnant, they have, you know, a place where all of their care is coordinated. So this is one of the major areas where we're seeing from the Maternal Mortality Review Board. And so we really need to, as a state, lead the nation in defining what the maternal medical home is, what are the components of it, and then what do we need to sort of create that system? So that, that's a big sort of system issue that we're looking at. The other area is, we were talking about earlier, is clinical care. And so we have the New York State Perinatal Quality Improvement. And that's where we take clinical care issues and we do an 18-month to 24-month, sometimes longer, intensive coaching, mentoring, professional development, data collection opportunity. Because evidence, data has always shown that one-time training doesn't change habits, that you need to build a much more comprehensive support system around clinicians to help, you know, embed and change and, and lead to sustained outcomes, not one-time outcomes, but long-term outcomes. So the Perinatal Quality Collaborative is really working on that clinical care piece. And then the other component, we talked about earlier, is patient knowledge of symptoms and when they need to really elevate those concerns and, and advocate, as well as ensuring that the clinicians hear those concerns. And so I was talking, we do have been running a campaign called Hear Her, H-E-A-R, H-E-R. And so that really promotes this idea of the, the sort of knowledge of what are your symptoms that you should be concerned about and what can you do when you are concerned? And then likewise, working with the clinicians to say, when someone comes with you with these concerns, that's really important that you pay attention.
Okay, Senator Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, when I was introducing myself, I forgot to say that I'm also the token dude, which I'm very happy to be amongst this group of folks. I'm very happy to be just the minority. I'm very glad. Two, two things. First, you talked about, you talked about federal money earlier. Obviously, you talked about some federal programs that have been started at the CDC but are funded by us, but you did talk about federal money. If you could dig into that a little bit, just so that we could be clear on the things that we should be, as you said, there's a lot of concerns related to what the feds are gonna be doing in the next few weeks, months and years. Are there any particular funding streams that relate to the area that we're dealing with today that we, that are federal that we should be concerned about?
So what I would say is this, certainly what we are doing within the department is looking very specifically at the initiatives and the programs that we have. What we have received from the federal government through their transition is certainly information through the form of executive orders and, and other types of communication indicating some of the priorities. We know from the past and, and again here, that when we're speaking of reproductive health in, in general, that we have areas that will, will possibly be at risk, including access to abortion services as one example. So our role and our responsibility at this time is first and foremost to continue to move forward and ensure that we continue to provide the services that New York State has funded and New York State has continued to stand by for a significant period of time, recognizing that we are in the business of promoting life, health and wellness. And then as we continue to learn more as far as the risks that are presented to us, working collaboratively with all of you and with others certainly, to determine- working collaboratively with all of you and with others certainly, to determine how we move forward in ensuring access to the services that individuals need. I do want to say, perhaps not directly related to the question, but certainly a priority in this discussion, is that as we talk about the protection of life, the social determinants of health are significant in that conversation. And so while we're, as we talk about maternal mortality and morbidity, as we look at the facilities in which the support and the care and these activities are located, it is also significant to talk about from a community level, and I identified individual as well as community environments, as an indicator to the risks of an individual, a birthing individual. And we have to continue to also look at the risks to those resources as well in the work that we do. Because understanding that if one doesn't have a home, if one doesn't have access to care, if one doesn't have food and proper nutrition, then this discussion is much larger and certainly before entry into the facility or hospital.
Thank you for all that, certainly. All of that exacerbates whatever issues might exist with someone. Thank you for bringing that up. Second, so we talked about the Maternal Mortality Review Board. I was very happy, I was very proud to pass that bill back in 2019. There's another bill that passed in 2019. This is not a gotcha question, but it's something that's in my brain. There was another bill, you probably won't recognize the number, which is perfectly fine, 4498, and 2019. But it is a bill that directs the Commissioner of Health to, in conjunction with clinical experts, to develop or identify management protocols and strategies related to obstetric hemorrhages to be utilized by hospitals. There was an original bill, and for those of you, just as an aside, one of the many short-sighted things that good old Cuomo did when he was here, there was the original bill that had a report requirement so that the Department of Health would be required every two years to give us a report. And there was a chapter amendment negotiated by the Cuomo administration that actually took that out. So you're not required to give us a report. So yes, one of many things. I digress. Cuomo sucks. Anyway, but I wanted to ask about that specifically related to, so it requires, again, hospitals to adopt obstetric hemorrhage protocols. They require hospitals to provide the protocols to the Department of Health upon request. So if, have you, have you requested this information? Again, it's not a gotcha, you might not have it available to you, but I certainly would want to see whether you have requested this information, whether it has led you to, what are hospitals doing as it relates to this in the state of New York? And how do you think it has impacted whether the numbers are moving in a positive direction or not?
Sure. So we'd have to get back to you more specifically on that one. I don't have that particular answer defined. I will share that...
Because you were not required to do a report because Cuomo sucks.
Right, but we will get, we will get back to you with information. I will share from the public health side of the office. We have, we did do a very extensive perinatal quality collaborative with our hospitals around hemorrhage, and that was really related to those protocols, right? So it was ensuring that there was screenings for hemorrhage risk upon entry, delivery, and, you know, upon exit, right? And really trying to make sure that hemorrhage was being assessed and providing professional development and resources and tools around how to really weigh and measure blood loss as well as to, you know, how to provide crash carts and those kinds of things. And so related to that work, we did this as the public health side, where, again, not the regulatory side, where we might inspect or require and review a protocol, but rather partner with the hospitals to ensure that hemorrhage, being at that time one of the leading causes for pregnancy-related death, you know, that that was an important issue to do. And I don't have that output from that particular, but we could likewise share with you the outcomes from that. We did see some pretty, you know, dramatic sustained improvements in hemorrhage protocols within the hospitals related to that topic.
I would certainly appreciate it if you could get it to us in the committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we've been joined by Senator Sam R. Bruch.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for being here. This is, one of my favorite things to talk about is how to improve maternal health outcomes. But of course, I wish one day we wouldn't have to talk about them anymore because they're all improved and there are no racial disparities. I was hoping to dig into the use of doulas. Obviously, we've worked as a legislature very closely with the Commissioner and your offices around rolling out the Medicaid reimbursement for doula care. I'm very proud that New York is the 13th state to do that, and we know that that, you know, the hope is that that would make substantial change. But I think as it has rolled out, I certainly want to take this moment to ask, you know, what that rollout has looked like. My first question is, do you have, and apologies if you shared this already, but do you have the number of doulas enrolled in Medicaid currently?
I do not, but I can provide that after this.
Okay.
It is something we are tracking and we can provide.
And are you aware of any kind of geographic trends or any trends in general of where we're getting more doula signups in terms of the doulas themselves?
I do not know that either, but we are tracking that data so we can provide you with more information.
Okay. And let me just open it up then. Have you received any feedback as we've done the Medicaid rollout on how this is working for the doulas themselves and/or the birthing individuals potentially hiring them?
Sure. Our Office of Health Insurance Program runs the Medicaid, and I'm in the Office of Public Health. We work very closely with them, and so they do town halls with doula groups. And so they have had very active interactions with the doulas. And so there, during the pilot, which was a number of years back, they were in two areas and the reimbursement rate was too low. And so they were not successful in enrolling doulas, especially in the New York City area. So the Medicaid rate for doula reimbursement was increased, I believe in the last budget year. And so that has been implemented in its place. And in addition to that, in our area of public health, we received legislative funding for doula expansion. And so we have been working with two doula training programs, one in Buffalo area and one in the city, and essentially using that funding to train doulas, not just limited to those areas. Much of their initial training is actually, can be provided through virtual training. And then there's a clinical component, of course, that goes with it. And then furthermore, there's a training for Medicaid, how to become Medicaid enrolled, really helping them enroll in Medicaid, because that's the goal, is not just that we have trained doulas, but we have trained doulas that are enrolled in Medicaid. So that funding has just started, so we have not yet completed training on any, for any doulas yet, but we, over the next year, should begin seeing doulas being trained out of those programs with the goal of really trying to increase the number of doulas who have access to training, because that could be a barrier, as well as access to, because they have to do a cer, provide a certain number of births to be able to, but they're not paid, right? So we have to, we want to try to reduce the barriers to doula training. So as I said, we just received that money and we are working with two entities, Calming Nature Doula Center and Ancient Song Doula, to really train individuals, provide support for that training, as well as the birth, you know, experience, and then the help to get them enrolled in Medicaid. So it's really those three components as part of the training. So I can get you the Medicaid data, but just know that we are working very closely with Medicaid because we want to make sure that that training really is aligned with the Medicaid rules and we are creating a pathway to doulas being able to be enrolled as Medicaid providers.
Thank you. And I'm so glad that you brought up that training because that was hard fought for funding in the last year's budget. I don't know if you're aware, but that was not a recurring budget item, so we are once again hoping to be able to increase that funding year over year so you can continue this training. So as much as you can share around what that has looked like, what you have initially learned, I know you said you haven't finished, no doula has gone through the entire training yet, but do you have a sense of your ability to reach individuals who are interested in becoming doulas? And then anything you've learned so far about doulas who are trained doulas now, but now need that guidance to actually sign up with Medicaid? Anything you've learned through this initial training process that would be helpful to us as we continue to craft legislation or budgetary language around how to make sure that we are providing what's necessary to continue that training?
Sure. I don't at this time yet have that information. I definitely understand and appreciate why that is helpful to you. There is a process to, a contract with the state, and so our initial work has largely been with having those training centers enrolled as vendors within the state and then going through the work plan and budget. So we're just in the stage of executing their contracts, so they haven't yet completed any, haven't yet done any training.
Done anything.
But, but once it's in place, you know, that obviously barrier is greatly reduced for continuing support for those specific entities. We do know based on their, you know, speaking with them, that the need exists and that this is going to be very helpful funding to ensure that doulas who, or individuals who would like to be a doula but for whom that would be a barrier because of the cost and also being uncompensated, right, for that time while they're getting trained, is an important support. And I do think, and we're working with them to really ensure that those funds are supporting doulas and will, once we get it up and running, we'll continue to work with them on the regions of the state where they're recruiting doula, you know, individuals to become doulas.
Thank you. So to go, I pinpointed something you just mentioned around the fact that the contracting process, which we've heard a lot about in all kinds of sectors, to get, you know, signed up with the state to be able to perform some of these duties. So is it fair to say, I mean, we passed the budget around April 1st in 2024? In the month of April it was, right? Okay. So from April 2024 to January, oh no, we're in February now, February 2025, is it safe to say it took that entire time to actually get these only two organizations through the process of becoming state vendors and only now being able to potentially start that work? Is that a fair assessment of that, that was the length of time necessary?
I can't speak for the entire state, but that has been my experience with these kinds of funding.
So if we're hoping to see change from the things that we're enacting, potentially one option could be trying to shorten that process because what I'm hearing from you is that we haven't really been able to implement a lot of these training programs, which is then slowing us down on getting trained doulas, which is then slowing us down on getting trained doulas in the Medicaid program, which then is slowing us down on saving mothers and babies' lives who are hoping to get that doula care. Is that fair?
So I think what I would say is that, as you describe it, it's a process. And it's a process that, where the contract is a significant piece of it, but there certainly are other steps as well in identifying who the contractors are and looking again at, you know, based on data and other information, how best or where best do we situate and look at the opportunities of establishing, you know, whether they're pilots or whether they're services for us to collect the data that you speak of. So what I would suggest is that within that year, what you see is a full process that is dependent on the department, if we're the facilitator, the external parties, and then the process of how we actually move through government to make sure we do our due diligence in contracting. I do think though, that while we may not have the data that perhaps you were initially visioning, there's opportunity to speak to the process so that you can see, or for the purpose of, as you said, for you to continue in the dialogue, for you to have the information as to what steps have been taken in the initial 12 months and what would be beneficial for us to be able to continue with.
Yeah, that would be fabulous information that I know we would all benefit from. The last thing, I know this, I've turned this into the doula hour, but no one's surprised if you've ever heard me talk. I do want to just touch on the reimbursement rates. Fully understand you are not with the Medicaid office, however, you are out there working and, you know, essentially working with organizations trying to recruit doulas to be a part of this. And I wanted to note, you know, it's interesting, when we were creating the benefit here in New York State, we did look at other states. And one of the things that has occurred in the interim of us passing Medicaid reimbursement here is other states have learned that they need to increase their own rates because they haven't seen the uptick in doulas signing up to take Medicaid, right? Because anytime there's a big delta between private pay and Medicaid, we're disincentivizing folks. And so I have seen that both Minnesota and California have increased rates. They're now over $3,000 per birth. New York State, I think no one would argue New York State is a little bit more of an expensive state than Minnesota, maybe more on par with California in terms of cost of living. But I am wondering if, you know, out in the field, as you are seeing this, you know, kind of develop and doula signing up and the interest or lack thereof, that it may, I wonder if we think it may be time to revisit? Because I think as of right now, the highest any doula can get is 1,500 per birth, which is half if they just moved over to California or Minnesota with good old Governor Walz and could be making a lot more. So I'm curious if, what you've seen about that and if maybe it's time to revisit that?
I think we would have to have a deeper discussion. There are a lot of issues related to Medicaid that are global and need to be balanced against any particular benefit. And so I think we'd have to look at what the benefit is in California and the other state, I believe you said Wisconsin?
Minnesota, Midwest.
Minnesota, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to Minnesota. But it's not a one-time rate, right, per birth. It's related to the activities before birth, because they're spending time, obviously, before birth and then in the postpartum period, as well as what could be a very lengthy period during the birth. And so I do understand that all of those factors have to go into determining a rate for a provider. And I think we would also really want to look at the global rates for our midwives and our obstetricians as well. One of our earlier statements previously was about the extreme shortages we have of the clinicians who can do the delivery. And so while it is critical to have the doula support, we do need to make sure that we have midwives or, and/or obstetricians, you know, available. So I do think it's, all of this is complex, but it's a more complex discussion and would really require our colleagues from the Office of Health Insurance Programs.
Thank you. So if I'm hearing that correctly, perhaps we are looking at increasing rates for all of those providers to make sure that we can have the health field that we need? In a more complex discussion?
We do have shortages.
Okay.
That's what I can say is factual.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have also been joined by our Women's Issues Committee ranker, Senator Wyke. Would you like to ask a couple of questions?
Good morning. Thank you so much for being here today and thank you for all the information that you're giving us. As a mother of three, I know how important this is. And I know that statewide, women everywhere are seeing problems with health, whether they have high blood pressure or they have other issues that are making it very difficult for them to have children or to have second children. And we know that once you've had a problem with your first pregnancy, as you move forward, there's typically a lot of problems and they usually get compounded. And this means a lot of healthcare and these, a lot of professionals. I think telehealth is really important so that individuals can have access to medical professionals at home, once they've brought their child home as well, to deal with mental health issues, nursing issues, just their overall well-being, because to run to the doctor all the time, especially if they're dealing with their own health issues, can be incredibly taxing. You know, when you have a newborn, you're sleep deprived, you have no time. And so I'm just wondering, with all this conversation, what mental health, maternal health-related professionals do you see as having the biggest shortage right now? Because I know we're looking to increase doula care and support them and provide better financial assistance for everyone to make sure that we're retaining employees, not getting rid of people to, and losing them to other states. So which professionals do you think are in the biggest demand? Where are we short?
So I, and I don't think it's, as I've said earlier, it's not limited just to pregnancy and people who provide pregnancy care, but among our clinicians, it's really... But, among our clinicians, it's, it's really across the board. It's the nurses, it's the anesthesiologists, obstetrician and midwives, who are, you know, the clinical team. And we have a number, you know, of areas now in the state, and it's growing, where there are fewer hospitals that have birthing facilities within them, right? They've closed that part of it. And so, we have individuals who have to travel farther to get not just their birthing care, but often their prenatal and postpartum care. Because if there's not, you know, obstetrical support, there might not be sufficient clinicians who can, midwives or, or gynecologists who can really provide that comprehensive care. So, I, I mean, that's a, that is a hard question to answer in the sense that there is, you know, a global shortage in clinical care. Specifically, you know, we provided some data on health personnel shortage area related to obstetrics and midwifery. So, I mean, those are kind of the core team for a birth, you know, for the birth to happen. We are, you know, I think, so I think that is the answer for that. But, they're not alone in providing that care. So, you mentioned other supports and services that are needed. We are looking at postpartum care using a community health worker. So, they're not providing clinical care, but they are available to really help people using telehealth to go over, you know, the, a symptom checklist, right? And then say, oh, that, that's actually concerning, you really should get to a clinician. Can I help you get connected? Or, you're having difficulty breastfeeding, let me get you connected to a lactation consultant, either virtually or if you go, you know, go in person, or we might find someone who can do in, in-home, you know, support. And nutritionists, you know, people helping with domestic violence or safety, you know, food, housing. So, we have over 200,000 births and we can't have a midwife or an obstetrician provide all the care that's needed in pregnancy. So, I, while, while we mentioned the core to the clinical team, I think we can alleviate some of the challenges and burden on the clinical team by having a more robust, you know, universe of care around pregnancy and would, and would really want to see us continue to support funding.
Do you have a model of that?
We're, we're test, we have received a federal grant that is just in its first year and we've initiated universal home, virtual home visiting with a community health worker. And that it is up and in place, but it's, it's very new and I don't have data yet. But, we're evaluating to see if that could be a model, not just in rural areas, we are testing it in a rural area right now, but even in urban areas. Because it's a lot to have someone get to your home and it's a lot for someone to have someone come into your home. And there is a, there is an acceptance for a virtual telehealth visit. And so, what we can do, what we're model, our model is, is following other, a national, a model that was developed actually, you know, sort of in another state, that has sort of three virtual visits that happen within 72 hour, the first one happens within 72 hours. And we go through these checklists of, you know, mental health, postpartum depression, we talk about breastfeeding, we talk about social determinants of health. And if an individual needs more care, then we refer them to a more intensive in-person community health worker model, either through the Department of Health or the Office for Children and Family Services, they have Healthy Families New York. So, our hypothesis is, is that that could be a sustainable model that we could scale up, both for workforce as well as feasibility, given the geography and size. But, I don't have the data yet to know if that is true. That's still a hypothesis at this point.
And with, and I see this on Long Island as well, we see a lot of hospitals, like you mentioned before, that are closing down their maternity section. Do you see a trend of where these closings are happening or why?
I have not, I have not looked at the data for trend, so I, I can't speak to that. We can, I can take that back as a question.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, I'm going to ask the last questions for this particular panel. And I want to thank you, oh, sorry, I will retract that a little bit. Give it to Senator Clear to ask one more question and then I will ask my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And not to extend the Samradoula Hour, but, you know, it's just, and, and I think you may have answered part of this in explaining the community health workers. But, how do I know a doula might be available to? How does that come to the mother or pregnant person?
Sure. The Department of Health has a directory for Medicaid-enrolled doulas that is available through the Health Department's website.
But, I'm saying, how do I, do I have to, you know, there are a lot of people, you know, doula's not a term that people were even familiar with for a while. And I see some of the people in the room here who have fought, Patricia, I see you. And even before becoming elected, this is something that I have promoted awareness about and I'm thankful to many of the legislators you see here, including our token male, who, who pushed for initial legislation that I was able to support. But, how do, how are we getting to mothers? And I know you said the, the Community Health Pilot Program, you're doing something in rural areas. We, this, this, it's a really pressing problem in, in, in black communities especially, as you can see the data supports. What are we doing to make sure that those mothers know that there is something available that can help them? Because it might not be something you think of. Pregnancy can be overwhelming and, and, and new motherhood, second motherhood, as Senator Wyke pointed out, it's, 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 you have no time and, and you really may not know what's available to you to help you through this process. And then, if you could talk a little bit about those third, three, or just clarify those three virtual visits within 72 hours, do you already have to be linked up with a community health worker or is this something we want to do for everybody? Because it sounds like a good idea for everybody.
Yeah, so, it's the first visits happen within 72 hours and then the second and third happen, you know, shortly thereafter. No, we, we are doing this pilot using federal, it's a state maternal health innovation grant. So, it's one of the innovative components of it, is that anyone who gives birth at that rural hospital, there's an individual at the hospital in person to greet that person and say, this is for everyone, because we really want to take away any stigma or, you know, against thinking, oh, this is for you, because we don't think you're able to handle pregnancy or, you know, having a baby. So, it was very important that it be universal. It's also much easier for the hospital if it's universal, because they don't have to worry like, what county are you in? What's your insurance? Like, they don't have to ask all those questions. And so, they will speak with the individual before discharge and, and essentially, it's an opt-out program. Like, so someone will follow up with you unless you don't want them to. And so, you know, we do ask questions about, are there concerns about your ability to access Wi-Fi or do you have a smartphone? Do you have any concerns about? So, we do try to do that assessment as well, because that, that's something we're, we're concerned about, especially in some of our rural areas, but could be in urban areas because data could be limited, right, for individuals? And we don't want to make assumptions. And then, they receive the visit. And so, if they have more substantive needs than can be provided in that sort of virtual space, they would be referred to a program, either run through the department or the Office for Children and Family Services, because collectively, we have statewide community health worker coverage. And so, this isn't related to doula though, so like doula, they are very important partners. And so, I'm not really answering the first part of your question, I'm answering the second part.
Yeah, I like the second part too.
I didn't want you to think I was somehow conflating this with the doulas, but, so this is a postpartum follow-up and checkup, because we do see the data, right, from birth through the one year. I, I don't have the exact numbers, but I believe it's around three-quarters of the deaths happen in that period, right? And so, that's why we really are focused on providing that, that support. And so, there's no requirements to be enrolled with anyone, you don't have to have any eligibility, you don't have to have had, you know, a certain amount of prenatal, you don't have to have any post, you know? So, their goal is really just to check in and do like a wellness and, and like I said, to go through those, those checklists that we know are important to receive and, and to go over what are the warning signs, you know, and, and what are the ones that you really should get to more urgent care? Because they're not going to provide the care, they're going to help the person get to the care.
Person get to where they need to get to.
Right. And so, to your first question, I mean, I don't, I don't know of specifically an outreach effort right now to ensure that individuals are aware of doula care. That's being run by the department.
Okay.
You know, I, I do believe that there are community-based doulas who are doing an amazing job of reaching into their community and working to make sure people really understand the importance of a doula, how to get connected to a doula, like what does a doula do? And then, we, we would like to do our best to really encourage and help doulas to become enrolled in Medicaid, so they can support people, you know, through Medicaid.
Well, I think it, that we should, particularly in areas where this is a problem, this is a stubborn problem, and I think doulas can help.
Yeah.
And I think that it's incumbent on us to really increase the awareness and make sure people know about this service and make it easier for them to access it while we try to build that workforce.
Yeah, there's good data to support doulas, helping, you know, ensure that people have, you know, the needs, what they need in, in the hospital.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Clear. So, as I said, I will close out our panel. I just have a few follow-up questions and I want to thank all of my colleagues for all of your, your questions. I'm going to go a little more in-depth with respect to the disparities piece. We've talked about it quite a bit, but I think it's important for folks to hear a little bit more, more specifically based off of some of the reporting that DOH has provided. So, in the past, DOH has stated that there are several factors that contribute to pregnancy-associated deaths. And so, several factors include community, facility, patient, provider, and system factors. And so, in that same vein, and I mentioned this earlier in my comments, that when you take all those factors into consideration as to, these are things that are lending to the disparities, most certainly as we're seeing pregnancy-related deaths. And at the same time, more than 73% of those deaths are preventable. And so, my question to the both of you is that can you elaborate on any other resources that you all may be providing to address those five factors that I mentioned? But, also, how you are trying to address the fact that more than 73% of those pregnancy-related deaths are preventable? And so, I know you've mentioned quite a few things, but I wanted to add a little more airtime for you to elaborate on any other resources or even policies that you all are engaging in that you haven't mentioned already. So, that's my, my first question.
Sure. If I could, I'd like to share a little bit more about examples of what those factors are. So, the way we categorize them are at the system level, at the provider clinical level, at the patient or family level, and at the facility level and the community level. So, the system, I'm sorry, the system level is more like our, our statewide policies and practices, right? And so, those, those factors include access and financial concerns, having a system that supports continuity of care and care coordination, and then the structural racism, which are a lot of the bigger issues that we brought up earlier related to the maternal vulnerability. So, the, you know, violent crimes, you know, the sort of idea of, you know, segregation into areas that have been under-invested, right? These are the system, systemic racism issues. And then, at the provider, at, well, at the facility level, go to that next, a facility level, it's really about the policies within the hospital, right? Like, what are the policies within the hospital? What can they, you know, how are they contributing to this, you know, discontinuity, right? And is there not transfer of information from one group to another? What are the, you know, interdepartment communication, substance use, right, mental health and clinical care for the pregnancy itself? And then, at the provider level, it's really related to like clinical skills and quality of care. So, issues of identifying like hemorrhage or embolism and then making sure that there's really immediate steps to address those, as well as ensuring good care coordination to the next provider, right? Good notes, right? Good notes in their medical records to make sure that the next provider can really get the information they need. And then, and I mentioned this a little bit already, but then delays in care, right? And so, good clinical knowledge followed by action, you know, that, that doesn't delay the care. And then, at the patient or family level, again, this isn't assigning any blame to the family, but it's acknowledging that at the patient and family level, there is a lack of knowledge about what symptoms are of concern, or if I have a chronic disease or a mental health concern, what, you know, who and what should I be doing about that? There's also the recognition that there might be, you know, shame and discrimination that may come with acknowledging a mental health condition. And so, you know, it, we need to, again, create the system that allows for that chronic disease, mental health, substance use to be treated and then the person to feel comfortable coming forward and saying, these are the issues that I have, as well as chronic disease, treating hypertension and, and those, those others for health-related. And then, at the community level, it's a lot of the community-based organizations, it's knowledge and outreach, it's knowing about doulas, it's knowing about, you know, the signs and symptoms, it's knowing about what are the other supports and areas that we need in terms of, you know, safe housing, transportation, how do I get to and from an appointment? We need to have that, right? Those community resources accessible to, to them. So, when you think about all those factors, there's certainly some of them that really fall squarely to the Department of Health, right? You know, we, we need to work, and I've mentioned, on clinical quality of care and clinical knowledge and responsiveness and policies, right? So, I've shared, you know, the Perinatal Quality Collaborative, as well as other work we do with our regional perinatal centers and, and their hospitals. But, we need to have real system and community supports as well. And so, we, we do work with community health workers, we do try to do things within the community, but we have to, we have to use that word partnership, right? We really need to partner with our colleagues in other estate agencies and with the legislature and with our community-based organizations and the individuals who are giving birth, right? And to try to figure out how to, to do, to do more to address these, these broader social issues. And so, we, we do a lot, we do listening sessions regularly. We have done group ones and individual ones after a death to try to gather more information beyond just a clinical chart review. We've actually interviewed people, you know, who, who have lost someone. We also go work with our community-based partners and they do listening sessions to find out what are the big issues and what are the strengths and what are the gaps? And then, we, we try to take that information, we share it with our Office of Health Insurance Programs, which has resulted in Medicaid benefit changes, right? We've talked about the expansion from 60 days to 12 months. That's critically important. We can't have 60 days of Medicaid coverage after birth when we know it's a whole year when the, the real postpartum period is. And we've done other things like adding in benefits for the prenatal screening, but also the remote monitoring. We have community health worker, nutrition, doula, right, supports and services, recognizing, like I said, that universe needs to be around it. And so, we also are trying to work with our colleagues in mental health and addiction services, because typically, the addictions or the mental health issues are, are happening throughout the life and then an individual becomes pregnant, right? And so, we need both information for the substance use and the mental health experts to understand pregnancy. And there's often a, a real concern and maybe not an ability to feel comfortable working with someone who's pregnant because of the, the pregnancy. But, that's a disservice for the individual who's pregnant, right? Who would get that service otherwise if they, they weren't pregnant. Who would get that service otherwise if they, they weren't pregnant. And then we need to help our clinicians understand substance use and mental health. So we're doing a lot of things, um I just, it's challenging because we have over two hundred thousand births across a very large state and there are a lot of clinicians, um you know, involved in all aspects as well as all of the community-based supports and services.
And that's a, a good segue to my next uh two questions that um, you know, we've been talking about racial disparities and one of the things, of the many things that stood out to me um from some of the uh citations from the Department of Health is that uh DOH know that that discrimination is uh probable or definite circumstance related to more than half of all pregnancy-related deaths. And one of the things that stands out to me when you hear things like that is, what does accountability look like? How do you um as an agency and working with various partners, when these things are cited by patients that they've had these experiences where they have actually raised issues or their care team has raised issues with the practitioner or with the hospital? And then those issues go unaddressed. What does accountability look like? That's one question. And then my second question related to regional disparities, uh we have heard the term um maternal uh care deserts and uh you all are tracking by region what that looks like. One of the thing, one of the many things we often hear as legislators is that how do people even know that this information is available and that, in fact, as a resident, you may not even be aware that you're actually in a maternal care desert, especially in rural areas? And this is something that I see quite a bit where I'm from in the Southern Tier, not exclusively. But I was hoping you could uh talk about how you are making the data available to patients? And then also that piece about accountability that I mentioned with regards to um discrimination.
Sure, so um, I, I mean, typically I've, I work in public health and so we're in the collaborative arm of the department and so we really use the information to help people understand those issues, right? So one side of it is really the, the idea of accountability typically in my, in my mind is punishment, right? As opposed to change, right? Like to change somebody through these, you know, more collaborative methodologies. I think there's obviously room for both and as I mentioned, if an adverse event happens in a facility, the department has an onsite team that goes to the hospital and reviews it and reviews, you know, all of the things that really happened. Uh, not just, not just the, the moment of the death, but all of the things in the whole team that, that supported the individual and even events that led up to it that it might have happened days or weeks before, right? If a person had presented. And so that is a side where there's really not necess, you know, that's where the corrective action plan happens and the, the need for, you know, um the hospital facility to say, here's what we're going to do differently, here's the policies we're going to change. That information, as I mentioned, is also shared with us as well as all the other information that we get. Um, and so we are working on addressing that statistic because that was a stark piece of data, right? Um, and that was the, one of the impetus for the um, the Birth Equity Improvement Program. And we've subsequently begun a NICU equity program because we see that bias and the racism happening for outcomes for infants in the NICU. And so we are working to expand that to a different team within the hospital, right? Because it's not always the same people in the NICU as in the, the labor and delivery, right? And so we are working on that and we're providing data to them that talks about the patient-reported experience. So if a patient says, I was discriminated, becau, one of the questions is, was I treated differently because of my race? One of the questions was, I treated differently because of my gender identity, my language or country of origin, my religion or culture, right? Those are the areas that we ask. So we give that data back to the hospital and we say, okay, you had this many deliveries last month and this many people responded and, and here's what they're saying. And then we give it to them over a two-year period so they can really, you know, see basically the, 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 you know, overall picture. But if they make a change, did it make it better? So then they know that I did something and now people are saying, no, I wasn't, you know, treated differently because of my race. And so that's where we're really trying to use this ongoing data to help hospitals say, okay, this happened this month, this month, this month, but wait, we see it really went down this month and we made this change and let's keep trying it. Like let's do it again and see if that really makes a difference. So that, that's one of the ways that we're doing in, in a, in one aspect of the clinical care that uh an individual would receive.
And I definitely want to lean uh more into that because, again, one of the things that we often say is that we pass incredible policies, but um as in doing that, we often say the devil is in the detail and I often remark the impact is in implementation. And so that piece to me is important when we talk about how do we, and it's not, I agree, accountability isn't just simply punitive, it's restorative.
Yeah.
Like how do we really get at um root causes while we have policies and data is a big piece of it? And so I definitely would love to talk with you all further about this. My um last couple of questions, I want to be mindful of time. Um, most certainly, we haven't gone um deep into kind of postpartum care, which we know um is a big factor with regards to um uh to maternal mortality rates. And so my um, my question is, and this is a nod to my colleague Senator Brooke as our uh mental health chair in the Senate, um can you talk about, I know we've made a lot of investments and continue to make investments in postpartum care, more specifically around um maternal mental health. Can you share what we've been doing as a state that's actually working? Whether it's around maternal mental health or other postpartum-related resources that we have been providing as a state?
Sure, I mean, we partner with the Office of Mental Health um as, as real the lead agency to support postpartum mental health care. And so the biggest investment for that is something called Project TEACH, T-E-A-C-H. And what that does is that provides on-demand remote consultation, training, and technical assistance to physicians who are supporting the person who gave birth. So if I am, you know, a midwife and I have, I have a patient who I have concerns about, I could call this number and receive access to a mental health professional who could help me know what to do best, um including if it's something very serious and that individual needs more support than I can provide, but at least beginning with that, right? And so this is the kind of information through our colleagues at the American College of Obstetrician-Gynecologists, for example, getting out to their membership and working with them to understand uh, you know, that these, these this support is available and can really help individuals not feel so overwhelmed if they have a patient, you know, a clinician not feel overwhelmed if they have a patient that they have concerns for mental health. And so if there are additional needs, there's also a referral process to get additional supports for the individual. If there's, you know, concerns around medication control, they can talk about that. So you get access to a psychiatrist and often somebody, in, in this case, somebody who has specialty knowledge around postpartum care. Uh, they similarly have this for children, so it's, it's a two-part program. One is for children's mental health needs and one is for postpartum. And so I'm speaking about the postpartum side of, of that investment. So we think that's one of the, you know, one of the critical investments that are happening for mental health care in the postpartum period. In addition, we have worked, collaborated, partnered with Office of Mental Health on reviewing, you know, mental health screening tools, uh creating a report that was made available on the, the Office of Mental Health's website and that was, you know, distributed uh through link to all of the clinicians. Um, and, you know, so, so those are largely the ways that we're, we're working on, you know, maternal mental health. At, at a state level, there's other opportunities, I believe, happening through the Office of Mental Health at local levels.
Thank you. And then um my uh, uh second to last question, Senator Rivera mentioned this earlier, but I wanted to, to lift up more specifically concerns with regards to the federal cuts. Um, I know that, you know, we've received a maternal and child health services black grant in the past. My question on that piece in particular is that um, do we have, or do you all have any idea if these funds are still going to be available? Is there talk of this program uh going away to your knowledge or other um federal dollars? I know when uh the commissioner was at the budget hearing, he mentioned you all have briefings every day. So I was just curious if you had any um intel on this particular piece or other uh federal resources that would be helpful for us to know as legislators?
Sure, and yes, we do continue to have briefings every day, more than once a day. Uh, what I will say is that for today, we continue to, to work with the grant as, as expected. Um, we do not know what to anticipate, but for today, we continue to move forward.
Thank you. My last question, um how can we as a state legislature continue to support you? I know we've asked you a lot of questions around what you all are doing, but uh what are some, you know, pieces of uh advice or input that would help us to support the work that you all are doing at the Department of Health?
Sure, I think partnership is great, um that's really important in how complex this is. You, you obviously are very close with your district and your constituents and it's very important for us at, at a state level to hear what are the concerns and the areas? Uh, both what are the resources and strengths within the district because there are a lot? Um, you know, what are the community-based organizations and who, who are the champions? As well as, you know, what are the needs that are getting presented? And if it's a, a lack of knowledge about the department, resources that might exist but are unknown, we can certainly provide that. Or if it, it is, you know, an unmet need, is there, you know, is there a way that through partnership we can think about, you know, who are the community-based organizations and what are the opportunities to engage clinical groups or other local health departments to, to provide, provide that support? So we, we've been working very hard to um really engage at the local level because we, we do not know everything and we, we are not present everywhere. Um, and so I think that would be really important to be able, we've um recently met with both the Senate and Assembly around maternal mortality, you know? So I think any ways that we can really partner together to, to collaborate, you know, in a, in a working-type meeting is, is always something I would be interested in.
And if I may, uh just to go back to your first question, you know, what I, what I wanted to say there is that at the end of the day, what we know and what we have to ensure and recognize is that patients have rights. And so we then have a collective responsibility, right? So the opportunity for us to continue to work collaboratively as we look at identifying where the gaps are, where we can continue to build and what the emerging issues are is essential as we continue to move forward to impact change.
Absolutely, and that's why I'm appreciative that the governor signed uh my bill into law with regards to the uh maternal uh health working group for these, these reasons. So I want to thank you both uh for your testimony, your time and your uh good work. Thank you so much and thank you to my colleagues for your, your great questions. And next, I will call up our next panel. Thank you all so much and as our next panel is coming down, uh I just want to remind everyone for folks who have just joined in the audience, um we are going to have uh our panelists come up. And for the next subsequent panels, the uh folks who will be testifying will have three minutes and then I want to make sure we get to everyone. So to my colleagues on the dais, we are going to get also three minutes to, to ask uh questions as well. So as our next panel makes their way up, allow them to get settled. I also want to note that any of the testimonies that we've received, written, um I know some folks have brought them in person today, uh we will definitely taking those into account. Part of the main reason why we're doing this public hearing now is that we want to make sure that for any potential policy, ideas, suggestions, budgetary things that we can most certainly act on these things uh ideally during this session and like I said at the top of our conversation uh beyond just uh today. So now that our next panel is seated, I will introduce them. Um, so our next panel, we are joined by, um and again, if I mispronounce your name, please uh correct me. Uh, we have from the Bronx Health Link, we have Anastasia Libovich. Okay, I said it right, uh who is a practicing midwife. Uh, next, we are joined by representatives of the New York State Midwives, which includes Helena Grant, who is the president. Also Patricia Loft, who is a licensed midwife in Odessa, Finn, New York City representative. And then we are also joined by Ashley Sawyer, who's with the Pregnancy, uh with Pregnancy Justice, who is a senior policy counsel there. And uh last but most certainly not least, we are joined by Chanel Portia, uh Portia Albert, who is uh on the New York City Commission for uh Gender Equity and is also a doula. So hopefully I got everyone. And so um I will say, uh let's start with Chanel and then we'll, actually, we'll start Anastasia because we'll go from the side to the side. Um, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. So everyone will provide their testimony and then uh my colleagues and I will ask questions after you're all done testifying. Thank you.
The opportunity to submit testimony today, in the interest of time, I'll offer an abbreviated version of my testimony, speak as fast as someone from the Bronx can, which is usually pretty fast. Um, there's a dire need to address the problems with maternal health care and the subsequent maternal mortality and morbidity rates in our state. Over the past several years, the Bronx, like other parts of the country, has seen the rate of black maternal mortality increase at a disproportionate rate as compared to that of other communities. The Bronx's mortality rate is higher than the rates for the city and the state at large. Even larger is the rate for black women and for women of other races. This is not a new problem, yet we need new solutions to create immediate and long-term change to protect and serve all the people in our state. These solutions must incorporate ways to address multiple stakeholders, parties who have already been hurt by the systems, parties who are within positions of power to call out and rectify both our best practices as well as our complicity or active participation in the harmful parts of the system and to build a sustainable new culture and practice of medicine with black and brown communities at the forefront. I stand before you wearing many hats. I'm a native New Yorker, born and raised in the Bronx. I'm a licensed New York State midwife. I'm a clinician educator, working with various learners in the South Bronx. And before entering healthcare as a public school teacher. I've become intimately connected with the various communities across New York City, seeing both the ways in which we sh- shine and the ways in which we suffer. In my role as clinical director of the Bronx Health Link, along with our staff and our partners, we aim to support and uplift the amazing work happening in our borough specifically around, specifically around women's health and maternity care. We strive to collectively envision better ways of doing medicine and community building so that the women, families, and birthing persons of the Bronx can have access to care that supports a holistically safe and healthy experience. As we speak today in addressing barriers to prenatal and postpartum care, allow me to highlight the work we have done in two key areas. Expanding doula access in the Bronx, instrumental in connecting patients to necessary services, and building a borough-wide collaboration to have community and patient-centered group prenatal care that is accessible to patients as well as sustainable to our local healthcare institutions. Prenatal and postpartum quality care happens when our birthing people are well-supported and informed and when our clinicians are well-trained, including in ways to recognize and address the harm within our own systems. In the current state of medicine, doulas fill many valuable roles, providing both education and support while sometimes needing to help pregnant and birthing persons access care they might normally forego. Doulas also fill the gaps of knowledge and care where our system is lacking. Our programming is designed mainly through the Bronx Doula Access Project to create systems that provide a doula to anyone in the Bronx who desires to have one, to to educate and inform clinicians about the gaps in care that doulas and other supportive agencies can fill, and to further the conversation of improving the healthcare system with stakeholders. The Bronx Doula Access Project is the Bronx Health Link's approach to creating increased access to doulas, but also to facilitating conversations with and amongst healthcare staff. Is that the end?
Yes. But you can finish that last part of your...
That last part is still long.
Oh, okay.
But I'll, I'll wrap it up in saying, we also find ways to utilize doula services in ways that are different than the typical model to increase access and for women who don't normally know about doula services.
Awesome. Thank you. Next, we will have our representatives from New York Midwives. So I know there's, there's three of y'all, y'all three strong. So I don't know who wants to go first. Maybe Helena?
Greetings and salutations. Helena Grant, New York Midwives. Thank you for having us. Greetings to all the senators, and thank you for you willing to unpack this problem and be solution-based and proactive. In the interest of time, I'm just going to get to the main part of my testimony, which speaks to the power of what is called integrative midwifery care. Midwifery, integrative midwifery care for all women and birthing people is a genesis step and the undergirding to establishing prenatal and birth experiences within hospitals, birth centers, and home spaces that is safe, satisfying, and sacred. This truth is recognized by the World Health Organization, which named 2020 the year of the midwife, and calls for midwifery care to be available to all women globally as the gold standard in every space that offers pregnancy and birthing services due to evidence that consistently demonstrates that countries that employ this collaborative model have the lowest rates of both mortality and morbidity and the highest rates of patient satisfaction due to the employment of every spec for bodily autonomy, constant communication and education through continuity of care. We heard that earlier, very important. And uplifting of shared decision-making models and adherence to informed consent. Indeed, in these other industrialized nations, there's a longstanding history of mutual respect between midwives, irrespective of location of practice, physicians, and the hospital systems. There's an understanding that while our specialized expertise differs based upon training and philosophy, we can and should work synergistically to co-create a harmonious space that benefits the care needs of the women we show up to serve. What exactly is integrative midwifery? How does it happen? And why does it rarely happen here in the United States and particularly in New York State? Well, let's deconstruct that. The Integrative Team Approach used around the world utilizes three care pathways. One, clients deemed low-risk may be offered total midwifery care with birth options in the hospital, home, or a birthing center. Two, clients initially deemed low-risk will be co-managed for prenatal care by a midwife obstetric team and other specialists if needed, if the woman has developed risk factors that she likely develops in her second or third trimester. And in this way, continuity, relation-based care, which is shown to have the best times, is honored. At the same time, the patient can get the medical care she needs if she develops some sort of issue. Here's where midwives will utilize our care models for things like patients who want vaginal birth after cesarean section to prevent extra risks of hemorrhage and infections, inductions of labor that they want to be gentler, or they want to avoid other issues. Number three, clients whose pregnancies are deemed totally out of midwifery scope of practice get care from an obstetrician or a high-risk maternal fetal medicine specialist. And then very important here to note that a return to normal philosophy is employed for the labor and birth within the hospital because a pregnancy with risk factors does not always mean a pregnancy where the labor and birth will contain risk. And you have the rest of my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the New York Midwives? Yes.
Hi, good morning, and thank you very much for permitting us to provide testimony. My name is Patricia Loftman. I am a licensed midwife. I practice full-scope midwifery, caring for women as a midwife in Harlem Hospital for 30 years. And I cared for women whose pregnancies were complicated by substance use, developing an expertise in that area. You have the testimony, so I won't go through the data. But what I will do is go straight to some solutions which are evidence-based. I also speak as a member of the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, maternal mortality review committee member since its inception in 2018. Record reviews demonstrated that the women who died because of mental illness, substance use, overdose, and suicide were ill long before they became mothers. They experienced trauma in their lives at an early age, sometimes prior to adolescence, which was not recognized and not adequately addressed. The result is that when these women became pregnant, the hormonal, emotional, and life stressors that accompanied pregnancy overwhelmed them, resulting in their death. One evidence-based solution to increasing maternal health is clinician capacity. Investment in the education of psychiatric nurse practitioners with federal and state scholarships and loan repayment for working in underserved areas, together with salaries commensurate with their education, clinical training, and experience. The nurse, the psychiatric nurse practitioner education occurs over two years, compared with four years of medical school internship and residency. Psychiatric nurse practitioners complement psychiatrists as the sole practitioners with the legal scope of practice to prescribe psychiatric medication. This is significant because people with mental illness are often in crisis and must first be stabilized before mental health treatment can commence. Licensed social workers can't fill this void. Another immediate evidence-based solution is to expand the number of crisis respite centers. This evidence-based solution is consistent with the Maternal Mortality Review Committee recommendation that New York State government agencies should fund the creation of respite centers for parents, newborns, pregnant people, and postpartum people with mental health and substance use and misuse needs. My last evidence-based solution is a recommendation that uplifts equity for black and brown women and birthing people. The literature documents that healthcare systems is utilized when women have the option and ability to access reproductive care with clinicians of their choice that facilitates the ability to have safe and satisfying care. The legislature created in the 90, in the 80s or 90s that each the maternity information law. Now, recently, that law was reintroduced in 2023, but it's already on the books. It's just that the information that you would need is not transferred from one, from one legislative session to the next. And so I would recommend that that is, 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 that that is updated and then enforced, because at this point, it's voluntary and hospitals are not complying with what is a law that's been on the books for over 30 years.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Greetings. My name is Odessa Finn, and I want to thank you all for convening this hearing. I'm going to go through my remarks very quickly, as we only have three minutes. I am a licensed midwife here in the state of New York since 2011. I came to midwifery for underserved populations, for those using public healthcare systems. They are the reason that I am a midwife. They have taught me everything I know about being an amazing midwife and an even better human being. I am obviously with the New York Midwives, we're in here today. But I also am a part of the Maternal Mortality Review Committee. That is another group of individuals that informs my work. When we look at the outcomes that were published by the city DOH on the pregnancy-associated deaths, we look at the statistics. There's a really interesting one that, that kind of blew my socks off when I first read it, and that was that the leading cause of death was mental health and substance use. Substance use was 20% of, 20 of the cases that were reviewed of the 58 in 2021. We also have another interesting statistic that looks at 31% of the decedents were associated with child protective services, history of substance abuse, and childhood trauma. A trauma-informed lens lets us know that these are aces. These are adverse childhood events. And we understand that the landmark study that looked at adverse childhood events done between 1996 and 97, I want to say 95 and 97, but the Center for Disease Control and Kaiser Permanente demonstrated that there are certainly links to multiple childhood adverse events and poor outcomes in adult life, riskier behavior, and shorter life expectancy. So when we look at all of this and we see that the committee also published data pointing out that many of the decedents disparately were black and brown people. They were also people that had this ACS involvement, that we have a certain percentage of those decedents that certainly were, based on the case studies and the case reviews, targeted and discriminated against as a result of their background and ACS was involved in their cases. So I'm going to share three recommendations from the 2021 Maternal Mortality Review Committee recommendations. Acknowledging this historic overuse and weaponization of child protective services, we're recommending the Office of Child and Family Services in partnership with the parents impacted by New York City Administration of Children's Services involvements should create clear, transparent guidelines for ACS to use when assessing and responding to referrals involving women and birthing people. Guidelines should include a duty to concern, consider, and mitigate the impact of interventions on the health of parents and ensure that the interventions are conducted in ways that best preserve opportunities for family unification. So these recommendations get around the idea that, you asked very pointedly, Senator Webb, that what are we doing about the preventable things? What are we doing about the things that we know we're hearing in the listening sessions? These are some of the recommendations that the committee thinks will move things forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Ashley Sawyer. I'm an attorney at Pregnancy Justice, and I'm giving testimony on behalf of the Informed Consent Coalition, specifically the Bronx Defenders, Drug Policy Alliance, New York Civil Liberties Union, and of course, Pregnancy Justice. I'm going to limit my testimony specifically to the issue of informed consent. I think this builds perfectly on what was just shared. We are, of course, very grateful for this hearing. Just want to say thank you for the commitment to this issue and this hearing. And we are specifically in support of the Maternal Health, Dignity, and Consent Act, S845. And we think of this as a reproductive justice issue, a racial justice issue, and just an equity issue, as has been stated multiple times this morning. We know that black women are disproportionately impacted by the maternal mortality crisis and die at a rate four times that of white women. And one of the ways, one of the recommendations we have for addressing this issue is through increased trust and transparency between healthcare providers and patients. And we believe that that trust and transparency is breached when people are tested for drugs without their consent or their knowledge. And so we've found that hospitals sometimes often use the practices of, quote-unquote, "test and report" that breach that trust and discourage people from accessing the very necessary prenatal care and healthcare that they need to prevent their own demise and that of their, their children, or their children. So hospitals often test pregnant patients and newborns without consent and then report them to the Office of Children and Family Services, which causes, of course, the trauma of newborns being separated from mothers and parents. And the healthcare facilities often don't provide medical intervention as a result of the test results. And even when not required by hospital protocol, there are studies that show that black and Latina families are tested surreptitiously at disproportionate rates. There is a 2010 study about a Rochester hospital that's referenced in the written testimony. But essentially, as you can imagine, black and Latina families are experiencing testing without this, without that even being the requirement of a hospital. And so our hope is that the Maternal Health and Dignity Act can help prevent those breaches of trust. We understand that this is already in a big portion of New York State public health and civil health, civil rights law. And while New York State has set forth informed consent requirements in some settings, so for example, for genetic testing, HIV testing, there is a requirement that people have informed consent, but that does not apply to pregnant and postpartum people who are drug-tested when they're seeking labor and delivery support. And we believe that they should be extended that same dignity and the same courtesy. So I'll just quickly conclude by emphasizing that, as has been mentioned in New York City specifically, overdose is the leading cause of death for pregnant people. And so we want to make sure that they have every opportunity to access healthcare and are not discouraged out of the fear that they will be separated from their children or experience surveillance through the Office of Children and Safety. And so we want to continue to emphasize the importance of both verbal and written consent for drug testing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last, but most certainly not least.
All right. Good morning, senators. Thank you for hosting this hearing this morning. My name is Chanel Portia Albert, and I come to you this morning with a dual role. One, as a New York City, as a commissioner and the New York City Commission for Gender Equity. I also am the founder and president of Ancient Song, and we are the largest doula-training organization in the state, as well as organization. So the Perinatal Health Vulnerability Index is a powerful measure that parses through threats to maternal health at the population level, analyzing the physical, social, and environmental obstacles that many adults face while trying to expand and raise their families. In New York State, one socioeconomic and physical health status are the greatest indicators of poor perinatal health outcomes, meaning that experiences one has and the care and support one receives is related to your wealth, your income, and general health and wellness, two deeply connected factors. The state already struggles to close an ever-widening wealth and economic gap. With implementing threats to, with, excuse me, with impending threats to federal funding, pregnant and parenting New Yorkers may find themselves bereft of services and struggling to care for themselves properly. To safeguard the pathway to improve maternal health, we must work together to enhance maternal health data collection, improve integration and collaboration between different systems and agencies, and increase investment in access to skilled providers for maternal mental health care and leverage existing city and state infrastructure to close gaps. Collecting and providing access to critical perinatal healthcare information is the assessment of a fabric, of the fabric of that strength. New York's maternity information law requires the publication of certain statistics, such as the annual percentage of midwife-attended births, the annual rate of C-sections and vaginal births after cesareans. Ensuring comprehensive and accurate data collection in each hospital strengthens the validity of the numbers and helps patients align their birthing venue choice with their birth plans. To strengthen this legislation would enshrine informed decision-making processes as a basis of safe and happy birth experiences because each person working to bring new life into the world and protect the life already here functions with similar knowledge base. Once we assess the damage, we can begin to assemble our team. Integrated healthcare models that start with expanding access to crucial providers like maternal mental health care workers and ends with collaborative local and state agencies, disrupting silos on a micro and macro level, facilities' easy flow of information and access, assuaging the fears that patients have of hospital systems that may act inappropriately towards them, and gives the government an opportunity to treat New Yorkers' vulnerabilities as symptoms of a larger root cause issue rather than separate, difficult-to-manage problems. Not only can patients feel like they are teammates with providers, but both patients, hospital systems, and the state can save money by coordinating care to avoid unnecessary intervention and offering healing strategies that support the curveballs of birthing and parenting. I'm almost done. Unlike fabric, however, women are strong. Our resilience allows us to keep trudging forward. Yet like fabric, we are only as much with, we are so much without the proper long-term strategy that can help us weather the uncertainties of parenthood, pregnancy, and trying to navigate reproductive health choices. We demand a city and state infrastructure that can generate solutions from decision-making bodies that work tirelessly to understand the intricacies of trying to care for oneself, one little one, and members at the same time. Relying on the city and state agencies like the Commission on Gender Equity to examine and assess obstacles to good health and push for unique and functional, functional solves to our distinctive needs. These agencies are attuned to and equipped to lead the charge on innovative strategies, but because have closer ties to communication channels with constituents, allow them to take the lead on initiating maternal health progress and transmute a grassroots approach to population-level health that can take individual needs and create coordinated holistic approach to save many lives. And so I will just say, we need to really defend our New York healthcare infrastructure that we have. Threats to federal funding have embattled the playing field on steady healthcare systems with, you know, backslide progress in maternal health. Do not employ a collaborative team-based approach to keep New Yorkers well while saving money for both the state and pregnant and parenting people with an aura of uncertainty surrounding the state.
Chanel, Chanel, don't worry. We're going to get into questions. So I just want to make sure, like I said at the top of our conversation, this isn't the last time. I want to make sure we give enough time for my colleagues because they're coming in and out because we're all in meetings today as well. So I want to make sure that they get an opportunity. So hold, hold that there. We, we got you. So Senator Bino, did you have questions for this panel?
Well, I have one question, but I don't know that I've fully developed it yet. It's regarding the written, signed consent for the testing. And what are, what are the... And what are the number-one reasons or the number, top-three reasons why you believe or these medical professionals believe that they have to test infants? What are they saying is presenting that substantiates or justifies these testing?
So I don't want to speak on behalf of medical providers or make an assumption about why they believe they need to be testing, but I do think it's important to emphasize, and this is in the written testimony.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure thing.
So there's no data to substantiate why they were taking these tests?
So I want to, I don't want to say no data, but our belief is that there is very little support for testing, particularly because the surreptitious testing of disproportionately Black and Latinx families is not necessarily going to be linked to any type of medical intervention or care. As we described, a lot of times the family or the baby or the parent is tested, and that isn't used in any type of medical care. It's just used to report the family to Children's Services. So it's not offering, it's not connected to increased healthcare or additional medical intervention.
Can I provide some additional? As I stated in my testimony, back in the '80s during the crack epidemic in Harlem, we created a clinic specifically for women who were using drugs. And there was a lot of bias around that. I can tell you a story about one time a partner presented with his wife for prenatal care. He worked midnight to eight, so when he came with her at the visit, he was kind of tired and was a little sleepy. And there was a record, the thought was that he was sleepy because he was using substances. And if he was using substances, was she also using substances? So a lot of times it has to do just with individual bias. What are the messages? What are the narratives that people have learned over their entire existence that they bring into the clinical setting?
In the interest of time, I'm gonna, I'll follow up because I'm interested, I understand that the medical providers are in some way responsible for, you know, reporting, right? But there has to be a balance, is what we're saying here, from having implicit bias dictate how they move forward in this level of testing. So I think it's a conversation that we should further develop.
I think one of the discussions that we've had at the Maternal Mortality Review Committee is that there are guidelines that exist around when women should be tested.
Well, that was what I was asking.
Part of the problem is, is that those guidelines have not gotten down to the people who are actually doing the work.
Okay.
So they are not aware. And so one of the recommendations that we are promoting is, number one, just the education of clinicians. The attorneys know it, you know it. It's got to filter down to the people who are doing the work.
So if there's a guideline, my point was then, are we collecting the data that then substantiates when they're doing the testing? And if we're not doing that, then we're allowing for, we're perpetuating the implicit bias by not enforcing that they are required to follow those guidelines.
So corrective action for that would be, would be to have records reviewed, women who are tested or their infants are tested. There has to be a mechanism to extract that information from the records, and that's how you collect the data.
Thank you.
Okay. And then next, I will introduce one of my other colleagues who also just joined us, Senator Jessica Carcellus Spanton, who also has a question for this panel.
Yes. Oh, I love that you know Staten Island. Well, thank you so much, everyone, for being here today. This is actually one of my favorite topics, especially when it comes to the midwifery model of care. I know we've done a tremendous amount of work with Borough President Antonio Reynoso in Brooklyn, and we're always yelling at everyone, just giving them the difference between a doula and a midwife. And both are incredibly important to maternal health and reducing maternal mortality rates. My question would be, what, I guess, twofold. First and foremost, what does the midwifery workforce actually look like in New York State? And what can we, as a state, do better to improve having more access to midwifery programs? Thank you.
So there are about 700 to 1,000 practicing midwives in New York State. But let's talk about how midwives practice, which is problematic. The midwifery model of care is a philosophy around birth being, I call the three S's, safe, sacred, and satisfying. However, midwives in the United States and hence in New York State are forced into a subset within hospital systems because 95% of all midwives in the United States, including New York State, work in hospital. Whereas in other industrialized countries of the world, they work within homes, they work within birth centers, and within hospitals, and the same midwives are rotating through the system. And so midwives in New York State are forced into that model. You have to be very strong-willed to resist adhering to the medical model, the patriarchal model, to fight for your patients and to fight for their right to birth the way that they want to birth. And so, you know, what could be done? More education around that, more accountability within hospital systems where midwives are attempting to provide the midwifery model of care and getting a lot of resistance. And I would even go as far as to say bullying around doing things that do not align with the model. And as far as increasing the workforce, there are, we have a few programs. We have two private programs, NYU and Columbia. We have SUNY Downstate, which is a program. And, well, Stony Brook is having some issues right now. And we have some out-of-state programs. We have the Frontier Program, which educates more than 60% of all midwives that are educated. We have a lot of distance learning programs, and we have a subset of students that go to places like Penn and like Yale. But we don't have a good, affordable program, and there are issues with clinical sites with the programs. Because if the midwives themselves are having issues in their workplace, what are they teaching then to the students, right? If you're going to work every day and you're fighting to be healed and we hear, to be a healer in the space, and we hear this also from our doula colleagues, we're not there being collaborative, we're there being the blockers. It becomes really problematic. And so we need more midwifery education, but I would dare say we need to create a different type of midwife that really understands how to push back against, you know, issues of human rights and issues of birth equity.
And just in the interest of time, we're actually working on creating that program within CUNY. We were able to secure it in our house in last year's budget because I actually was trying to go that direction, and I know how hard it is to have access to education. So thank you for that, and we'll connect offline.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Senator Brooke, do you have questions for this panel?
Thank you. I actually would love to go back to the informed consent debate. This is something that I personally witnessed going through the pregnancy process and asking the questions of what's being tested and why. And I did not get that good of an answer around why they were doing, you know, toxicology testing and opted out of it. I said, if it's not necessary for my child, I don't need to do it. I know what I'm taking and not taking. But, you know, that was kind of, you know, this experiment of how you are treated in this process. And I wanted to share with you all, I was actually enthused to see that, I think it's Senator Salazar's bill that you are referencing. I'm a supporter of this bill. But I will share that there is significant pushback around the idea. And often it is aligned with the idea that, you know, not wanting to miss when someone could need care or is, you know, partaking in whatever substance use. So I want to give a moment for you to share why that shouldn't be a concern or what your observations are, because I think it's a valid concern and I think it needs to be addressed. And we only have a minute and 48, so there you go.
Yeah, so as a doula who has worked in the space, who has seen the illegal drug testing of patients, I would say that it's not necessarily that folks shouldn't be tested, it's the way in which the testing is taking place, right? And so there's no true informed consent really actually happening so that the person fully understands what is going to happen, why, to your point, be explained to them why they need to have it happen, and then be able to make an informed decision about their care as to whether they wanted to proceed or not. In the instances that I have supported individuals in the Bronx has some of the highest rates of where people are illegally tested, it has been because maybe somebody came in the room who was a support person who smelled like marijuana, and so now they're testing the person. It could be because English wasn't their first language, and so now they're testing the person. If the person has refused to test themselves, then they are testing the child, right? So then they are going and they are bagging the urine and testing the child and then calling ACS on them, and they're not finding out about this until they're about to leave and they're saying, oh, we need to have a patient safety hearing right here at bedside, and you need to explain to us what is going on. So like, these are the instances that keep perpetuating themselves, so when it comes to the education that needs to happen, it's really about educating providers on how to really apply true informed consent, what that means, and taking that opportunity and, you know, the pushback will be, well, we only have like 15 minutes to be with someone, but it really only takes two minutes to explain it to someone, some things, in a way that they can understand so that they can make an informed decision.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking to the time. I would love to follow up with you all after this. I do think we should continue this conversation around potential passage. Thank you.
Okay. My questions for this panel, and again, open to anyone. So I know we've talked a lot about disparities and what the challenges are. Can anyone elaborate on what is actually working from your area of expertise, experience? What are the things that you are seeing on the ground that's actually helping to turn the proverbial tide on addressing maternal mortality and morbidity rates from your vantage points?
I'm going to say nothing is working. Yeah. You know, because I come in spaces to tell the truth. If something was working, the rates of maternal mortality and morbidity would not be rising. So that informs us that nothing is working. And the reason why nothing is working is because we see in these reports that one of the main reason on a state and a city level is no continuity of care. Pregnancy was always a time where it was about creating a relationship with your clinician. And so when we have people who have many social determinants of health, and then we expect them to go into a hospital system, see a different person every time, get naked in front of a different person every time, and tell their life story to a different person every time, and people to read in a chart things that are about them, I'm not, they're not creating a relationship, there's no trust. And then on the day that you're in pain and you need to see a familiar face the most, that's also a different person or many people. And so the continuity of care model that we see in other places just does not exist here. It's not uplifted here. And that becomes problematic for care that is based in equity. And we see that some women are not having that problem, right? Because they have private clinicians or they go into systems where they can do that. And the people that need that relationship-based care the most to be able to reveal things to, to be able to have true informed consent where they're taking medications and they're doing what they need to do, it doesn't exist for them. So if we drum it down to what pregnancy was supposed to be and we look back on it historically, we can see this aberration that we've created, that which is the American obstetric model does not meet the needs of women and birthing people, independent at race, but it hurts Black and Brown women the most.
So in that same vein, I know I have limited time left. Can you all talk about what else could we be doing from the state in terms of state legislature to help augment the work that you all are doing? And I'll ask for another minute from the timekeeper. Thank you.
I would just lift up, one is better data collection. So as was mentioned before and earlier, you know, we have a system that is very siloed. And so, you know, you don't have any continuity between community-based organizations, community healthcare clinics, as well as hospital-based systems. So if you have a homebirth midwife or you have a doula organization, you know, they have a patient who's going into the hospital, you know, you're not in epic, right? You don't have, there's no level of continuity of care. So now the patient has to continuously repeat themselves. The provider has to continuously repeat themselves. So we need a better way to like really desilo the work. I would also lift up that there needs to be more efforts made in terms of education, right? And not just education on the part of the patient, I think that there's a concerted effort to always mobilize and really give like a lot of patient information, which is fine. But if the providers aren't necessarily being held to the same level of accountability, and you mentioned this earlier, then we find our infrastructure at risk, right? And so whereas when you ask the question around how is systems being transparent to, you know, community, they really aren't, right? So like internally, they're being accountable to themselves, but the community is not getting that same level of oversight and accountability and transparency to know like, this infraction has happened, so why should I now trust you to even want to go into your place, you know, and feel like, oh, that same level of harm is not going to happen to me? And so some of those things could be alleviated through, you know, community-based advisory boards, you know, really leaning into maternal mortality review committees on the city and state level, really holding to those recommendations that have been provided, and then using the state offices that we already have and the infrastructure we have to, you don't have to build something out, like the Gender Equity Office, that's completely totally underutilized. And the purposes that it was established for, which was really look at how is gender equity being lifted up in our city, is we had, there hasn't been an executive director for two years. There has, you know, there's been reports that have been put out and initiatives, but where the commissioners are supposed to have oversight have not had an opportunity to give, you know, actual general input for that oversight. And an office where maternal mortality and morbidity could actually be looked at from a city and also maybe even a state level where you have an office that could be dedicated to it to look into these different infractions that are happening, there's nothing. So again, these are infrastructures that are already here. You know, we have to work together to really try to find ways that, again, doesn't pull from the resources that we have, just restructuring the resources that we have.
So I know I have to abide by my own rules here, but I just want to just emphasize for the record that, again, this is not our last time having this conversation. I just want to lift up again, and it may have been lost as we were transitioning to the panel. One of the main reasons why we chose to do this hearing in the middle of budget, first day of session, it is because the need is so great. We want to make sure that whether it's policy, support, budgetary investments, that we have this conversation now as we're continuing to move forward on this important issue. And so I just wanted to say that, not just simply for this panel, but for everyone and for those who will watch later, this is really important. And so I will just close here and just, I see you wanted to say one more thing. I'll give you 30 seconds to make sure we get to our next panel.
I am the last person that will ever refuse money, but money is not always the solution to problems. I worked in a system where we took care of the highest-risk women for over 10 years. And if anyone should have seen poor outcomes, we did not. And these were women who were chemically dependent and pregnant. What is most important in any system is the leadership that exists and the accountability of the state agencies that monitor that accountability. When you have an institution where there are multiple maternal deaths, the agency goes in, but there really doesn't seem to be any accountability for what transpired. And I think that's what's missing.
Thank you for that so much. Thank you all so much for your great work. And please, if you have additional contact information, please make sure you leave it here so we can follow up. Thank you all so much. As I call up our next panel, as we transition, and thank you to my colleagues who are still coming in and out. So as the next panel is coming and taking their respective seats, I will introduce them for this panel. So the last panel, we heard from advocates, and we'll hear from some more advocates later on. This next panel is a panel of providers or practitioners, additional practitioners. And so we are joined by Dr. Shawnee R. Scott with Albert Einstein Metaphory College of Medicine. We are also joined by Dr. Ashonda St. John with the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, representing United Health representing United Health Services Hospitals Incorporated. We are joined by Erin Raskin, who is the Nurse Manager of Maternity and Newborn Nursery at UHS. Also, Crystal Thompson, Dr. Crystal Thompson with the Obstetrics and Gynecology Women's Health, also at United Health Services. And Frank Dow- Dowlong, Dowling? Dowling, thank you. Dr. Frank Dowling, who is the, he's a member on the Committee on Legislation. He's also a Clinical Associate Professor of Psychiatry at the Renaissance School of Medicine at Stony Brook and also a part of the New York State Psychiatric Association. And last, but most certainly not least, we are also joined by Jana Walter, who is a Registered Nurse with the New York State Nurses Association. So I will start to my right, which will be your left. To start your testimony, again, you'll have three minutes. Thank you all for being here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was last. Hi, sorry. Sorry, I'm like, wait, no. My name is Jana Walter. I'm a public health nurse, working for the Sullivan County Department of Health. I'm also previously a doula and I am a CLC. My job with the county is to supervise our maternal-child health nurse program and our healthy families programs, which provide home visits and other supports to women during and after their pregnancies. We also provide nursing care to, from birth to children of age 17. I want to thank the chairs and members of the committee for holding this hearing to address the maternal mortality and morbidity crisis and giving me the opportunity to share our concerns. Let me also note that I'm appearing today as a member of the New York State Nurses Association and I am not representing or speaking for the Sullivan County Department of Health. The ongoing crisis of high maternal mortality and morbidity rates in New York and nationally are well-known and widely acknowledged. So I will not go into too much detail describing the problem. We know that maternal mortality rates in New York and nationally are more than twice the rate of comparable countries. We also know that there is a major racial and class component to the problem as black and low-income women generally have mortality rates that are four to five times higher than those in white or more affluent populations. The causes of high mortality, maternal mortality are also well-known. Lack of access to prenatal and postnatal care, untreated mental health and substance use issues, high rates of hypertension, diabetes, cardiac, coronary illness and other diagnoses, overuse of C-section deliveries, which are inherently more dangerous than vaginal births. These and other chronic emerging health, emerging health conditions are prevalent in the wider community and are made worse by the stress of pregnancy, labor and delivery. The good news, however, is that three-quarters of maternal deaths are preventable. We have to just take action and put into place policies that will save women's lives and improve their long-term health and that of their babies. In my daily work providing care, educating and coordinating, coordinating services for the pregnant women of Sullivan County, I see firsthand what is causing maternal mortality and what we need to do to tackle the problem. First, we must expand the availability of perinatal services. Two, many women live in healthcare deserts, particularly when it comes to maternal care, primary care and psychiatric and substance use services. In Sullivan County, many private physicians and corporate practice groups do not take Medicaid patients. That puts extra strain on the FQHCs and the clinics that do care for low-income and minority women, making it hard to access care and causing delays in scheduling appointments. I have encountered many women who were unable to see a doctor until they were in the beginning of their third trimester. That is too long to wait and it is very dangerous. Local hospital perinatal services are also limited, contributing to the crisis. In Sullivan County, for example, we only have one hospital. It provides limited service and has no neonatal intensive care unit. It is equally affected by low Medicaid reimbursement rates and its resources are stretched thin. The county's maternal health services try to fill the gap by providing pregnant and postpartum women with home visitation services, but we don't have the resources to fill all of the holes in the safety net. I'm almost done, I'm sorry. Second, we have to address the chronic conditions and health inequities that are prevalent in the community that leads to high maternal mortality. Based on my experience as a nurse, I believe that the legislature should consider the following measures, which I have provided to you.
Thank you.
So we'll go through them.
And thank you for respecting the time. We appreciate it so we can get to everyone.
Thank you.
Next, I think we have Dr. Dowling.
Thank you. You have my written testimony and I'm gonna try to hit the highlights to use the three minutes well. In representing the New York State Psychiatric Association, we're pleased to be part of a collaborative group that's working to seek passage of the Maternal Health, Dignity and Consent Act. And it's great that several of the senators that have been here today are co-sponsors of this legislation. What we're looking for is informed consent for clinical screening question and answer, as well as drug toxicology testing. This is so critical because people being tested secretly, we've heard several times it's damaging to the relationship, patient-physician. It's also unethical. Our AMA Code of Ethics calls for informed consent. Now, most of the time when we look at this, we think of higher medical risk directly in procedures, surgeries, testing that might be higher risk. But because of the results of the way this is carried out, it ends up being very risky, okay? Because if there's a positive screen verbal asking or drug testing, there's a high risk that there's an automatic referral to services that itself can be harmful and very stressful for a parent pregnant to be investigated or loss of the connection, separation of parent and child at birth. That, that's extremely traumatic and really does cause psychological injury. So that's why informed consent is necessary. That has nothing to do with what are the reasons why someone is testing. There may be good reasons, maybe we need to rethink what those reasons are when they're not so good. But informed consent, that there are risks, even if they're not the way we think of direct medical risk. In passing this bill, we would also be able to address this, the serious inequities that happen for racial and ethnic minority patients in New York. Compared to white patients, black and Hispanic patients are more likely to be screened verbally, tested with lab work, and then if there's a positive test being reported, where that has consequences, as I mentioned. It's also critical to be aware that using alcohol or another substance does not mean there's a substance use disorder. Many people, once they find out they're pregnant, if they use at any level, they reduce it or they stop. If there's a substance use disorder, and this is discussed in an even-handed way, a collaborative and caring way, there's more of an opportunity to address it in treatment, which reduces risks for the pregnancy and, and birth and the newborn after birth. It's really important to be aware that as well, some hospitals, some doctors report people for medication-assisted treatment. That's the standard of care that reduces risk, it doesn't raise risk. So I thank you for the time to be here today. I'm happy to answer questions along with others, but we stand with the coalition in support of the Maternal Health, Dignity and Consent Act.
Thank you. Our next panel?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Ashonda St. John. I'm a board-certified OB-GYN and I'm providing testimony on behalf of ACOG District Two. I want to thank the joint Senate Committees for the opportunity to provide testimony in their efforts to learn more regarding maternal mortality and morbidity. Persistent rates of preventable maternal mortality are unacceptable and despite making progress in our state ranking, the loss of even one mother is devastating. I am one of only two doctors in this state who actually is appointed to both the state and city maternal mortality review board. And I am co-chair of the New York City Maternal Mortality Review Board. New York must continue to focus on the ongoing maternal health crisis as federal actions devalue evidence-based care and clinical judgment. There are unprecedented challenges to maternal mortality crisis in light of federal policy actions which seek to devalue clinical expertise and evidence-based care, as well as threaten public health programs, information and research. We contend with persistent racial disparities in maternal health outcomes. The state needs to uplift ongoing quality improvement work and work with clinical communities. State healthcare policies must work to reduce health and socioeconomic inequities and access to pregnancy care and outcomes. So one of the things that I can contribute is that 20 years of my career was in New York City. And now five years has been in rural New York, in Kingston, Elster County. So I'm actually able to look at through a different lens, what impacts rural communities versus urban communities. And so when we think about prevention and we think about maternal mortality, we have to also have that conversation with social determinants of health. Because there are different social determinants of health that impact rural settings versus urban settings. And one of the things that ACOG District Two does is that they have the Safety Motherhood Initiative, the SMI. And this is through state funding. The SMI offers accessible tools through the app, which includes checklists, algorithms and bedside quality and excellence. One of the things I noticed when I came to upstate New York is that there was a C-section rate for black women of 60% and higher. That's unacceptable. And so using quality and excellent as a bedrock to educate and, and really kind of perceive, pursue best practices, we were able to drop that down to less than the national average, under 20%. But again, with those strategies, those resources that ACOG provides, that was quite helpful. So one of the things I also want to say is that there has to be a long-term investment in maternal health. This is a crisis. When a patient travels over two hours to see me, because maternal deserts are real and they want to see a black woman because they feel that they will listen to them. And one of the things we can do better is be better listeners. And we can have more representation in the workforce. Because women who are afraid to have a baby or who are pregnant and afraid to deliver, they should not live in that, they should be living in joy and about to be a mother. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. And last, but most certainly not least, our representatives from UHS.
Hi. Hi, thank you, Senators, for this opportunity to discuss the concerns and barriers to our prenatal and postpartum care. I'm Erin Raskin, I'm the Nurse Manager of the Maternity and Newborn Nursery at UHS. That's located in the Binghamton-Johnson City area and we serve the Southern Tier. And with me today is my physician colleague, Dr. Thompson. So I want to first describe our area that we service. Our areas face a significant economic and healthcare challenges with 19% of our households having an income of $25,000 or less. And in that family, over one in four of our children are living in poverty. Nearly 44% of the area is rural. We have a lot of patients that come from all over the area to seek care in our facility, which is impacting their access to healthcare while also adding in language and cultural barriers, further complicating the access to our care. This underserved population faces many gaps in prenatal care, increased mortality and fetal risk, often compounded by coexisting social health factors such as poverty and mental health issues. In our area, we collaborate very strongly with the Mothers and Babies Perinatal Network, which helps connect families and healthcare insurance and medical care and essential services that they need for their family. These nonprofits rely heavily on grants and public funding to provide the vital support, especially for vulnerable populations demonstrating the need for increased funding and partnerships to enhance our care. In our area, we service a large part of the population that has substance use disorder and we're constantly improving, looking at that as ways to improve our care. UHS offers a specialized addiction treatment for pregnant and parenting individuals that includes an inpatient bed. And with our initiative, with our innovative collaboration with the addiction medicine, maternity ensures that all delivering patients at UHS are given on a lock zone kit at time of discharge. We believe that this initiative on the floor has distributed more than, more than half, more than half the areas access to lock zone kits, which we believe has contributed to 40% decrease in suspected fetal, fatal doses and 52% decrease in suspected non-fatal overdoses. Also on the, you know, we're also trying to, we're starting an initiative where postpartum patients will be discharged with a bracelet indicating that they recently delivered and hopefully bringing awareness to the community on their needs and how their needs are going to be different in that post-parent, postpartum period. Some of our recommendations, and Dr. Thompson's gonna give more information, but one thing that, the things that we really want to ask the legislation to help us is to continue the work that we are doing at UHS. Dr. Thompson's gonna give a little bit of an insight into the, a perinatal navigator that we would, that we want to institute and the benefits to that role for our community, as well as bolstering our community benefit, our community organizations to help them connect, help our patients connect with healthcare, insurance, lactation services, pediatric, transportation, other essential services. We also want to expand our education for the healthcare workforce and helping them recognize and address these complications early on. And then lastly, but not least, advocating for the continued addiction care by ensuring continued access to insurance and FDA-covered medications. Thank you.
Thank you for having us to give our testimony. I'm Dr. Crystal Thompson. I am, I specialize in obstetrics, gynecology and women's health at the UHS Wilson Hospital in Johnson City, New York. Our hospital is a Level Two Trauma Center and a Level Three NICU and we are a referral site for surrounding hospitals for a higher level of care. With that, we see a lot of high-risk patients. Also in our area, we serve a very diverse and a very underserved community. So with that, we need more resources. Some example, an example I had today, we recently had a tragic situation where we had a patient speaking on not having access to care. We had a patient who came in, she was like maybe a week and a half close to her delivery date. She comes into the emergency room, language barrier, does not speak any English. They bring her to labor and delivery. Her only complaint was, I'm having pain and I need to use the bathroom. We assess her for labor, she's not in labor. She keeps begging to go to the bathroom through the translator. We send her to the bathroom, she passes out on the toilet. We rush her to the emergency, to the operating room to deliver. She had a fetal demise about a week and a half to her date. She had an abruption, she had three liters of fluid in her abdomen. She presented to us like that, this is a person who had no prenatal care and that should not be a thing in, in any area at all, whether it's rural or in a big city. But we are having people who are not having access to care, no transportation to the hospital, language barrier, cultural barriers. So we do need help with resources for that. That's just during, that's just during pregnancy, but also postpartum. We never, once the babies are out, we don't think about the weeks that are after that, but those are also critical weeks where things can happen. So to address that as a hospital, we want to get perinatal navigator nurses to will be able to round on our patients after deliveries to make sure they have their postpartum visits set up. They have transportation to their appointments. They're linked with lactation specialists for moms who want to breastfeed their babies. They have their pediatric appointments for the baby. There are a lot of things that need to be followed up after the baby is born and we kind of dismiss those things sometimes in care, so we want to make sure we address that. Especially in our neighborhood, because we have many patients who, who have no housing, no transportation. So we have a lot of socioeconomic barriers. So the navigator nurse will help to stay on top of those patients to make sure we don't lose them to care and that we're watching them on postpartum. Also, we want to discuss some disparities in healthcare. As we've been saying all day, black women have four times more likely risk of mortality and 70% of it is preventable, which is a very high number. So that's something that needs to be addressed. So we also as a hospital want to do more training on, in biases, cultural biases, language barriers and trauma, recognizing trauma sooner and also following our patients and their care. So that's, those are two major things we want to discuss today.
Thank you. Senator Brooke, you want to ask questions to this panel?
Thank you so much and thank you all for being here and for your testimony. There was a few things that caught my attention, but one in particular, I think it was Dr. St. John. You mentioned that when you started at your Kingston Hospital, there was a 60% C-section rate for black patients and that you got that down to under 20%. Spill the beans, girl. Tell us about what you did and what's, what you think is easiest to replicate perhaps that we can be taking away for other areas.
Yeah, so I think a lot of what we spoke about earlier today, continuity of care. So making sure that they have the same provider. I also developed a maternal medical home. So it was an integrated approach with our nurse, our mental health specialist, our social worker, our navigator. And we had weekly meetings about every patient. Now, again, I have a very much smaller volume than I had in the city, so I was able to do this. But in addition to that, I ran data analytics. When were these C-sections happening? Who was doing them? At what time and what day? And what I found is that they were done between four and six o'clock and they also were done on Fridays. So then, we then had weekly C-section meetings. And it wasn't punitive, but it was everyone, we discussed every case that, that resulted in a C-section. In addition to that, if there was a non-urgent C-section, then we had a peer-to-peer consult where they had to call me to then explain to me that they exhausted every effort to have a vaginal birth. Because we understand that once you have a C-section, number one, it's complicated. It is a major abdominal surgery. It can, it can lean towards more complications. And then also in your future pregnancies, you may not be able to have a vaginal birth. So we understand what the data shows, right? In addition to that- In addition to that, the linkages with community health workers and with doulas. What I found in the Hudson Valley is that, you know, a lot of my patients, I had a very different variety in terms of socioeconomic, in terms of patients. I had very wealthy, and I had those that weren't, right? And so my very wealthy patients had doulas. They could afford it. They can pay for the private doulas. But my patients of color did not have doulas. And we know that's another layer of support, right? And we understand that we have to work collaboratively. This is evidence-based data that shows that we reduce maternal mortality.
Can I cut you off quickly? Because I want to get an answer to something. No, no, do not apologize. We only have 30 seconds, but I wanted to quickly check. When you mentioned that specifically in your area, more of your Black population were low-income, we know we have the doula Medicaid benefit now. Was that, did that tie in to some of these changes? Did you have an uptick in doula use for some of the other folks?
So I partnered with a community-based organization called Mid-Hudson Chocolate Milk. It's doulas of color.
Okay.
I just love the name. And I worked with them, Chloe Vitell, I'll give her a shout out, and she was able to afford doulas for my patients of color. And then I had a large immigrant population that did not, they were from Guatemala, did not speak Spanish, which I speak Spanish, they spoke indigenous language. So then we had to do other partnerships and community outreach. So again, it's multi-layered. There's not one size that fits all, but we have to be creative. And if we understand that we're returning joy into motherhood and to the birthing journey, then we have to look outside the box.
Thank you. Let's follow up. I'd love to hear more about that. Thank you.
Thank you all again for making the time to, to be here. So I have two questions open to the panel. Clearly, there's a lot of support, encouragement for the Maternal Dignity Act that was mentioned. I just wanted to have the panel elaborate on what you see that, the continued elaborate on the implications of that particular legislation. And then also, going to the Perinatal Navigator Program, definitely like to hear more about what supports are needed to ensure that that program can continue. Because one of the things that we often find, I'll just be candid, we make these one-time investments, and then these programs go away. And then we're right back, not even necessarily a square one, I feel like we're starting off at like net zero. So I'd love to hear about those two things in particular. Whoever wants to jump in first.
I'll jump on the Perinatal Navigator. Once again, we're in the infancy stages of it at UHS. But one thing that I do think to make sure that it's successful, and like you said, the different barriers that can possibly play into it, is the active role throughout the community with that position, as well as our physician colleagues. For me, for the, for my unit and my patients, I want to, I want to be involved with that position and making sure that we are targeting where we think our population needs it, and really helping with where those barriers are in their postpartum period. We've identified some opportunities to help connect some of those dots at UHS, and we now have a mid-level that now rounds on the postpartum unit to help connect those dots a little bit more. But I think just the ongoing support of that role, if you think about a lot of areas within the medical field, a lot of disciplines have navigators that help with, throughout the patient's journey, through their medical care and maternity care, postpartum care, all that stuff, that's, that's missed. So I think if we embrace it, just like we do with other navigators, I foresee the program being very successful and warranted. And even think about postpartum moms, like, you know, they don't usually get physical therapy appointments and just the most simple, basic stuff that after having a major surgery, that most patients, that piece is thought about for this population, it's not. So just another resource to kind of link all the different resources to the patient through their journey.
It's a position that is not reimbursed, so sometimes we're unable to keep those people because it's not, it's not a position that's reimbursed. So I guess, I don't know if there's space in the budget for it, but we, we start out with it, then it falls off because it's something that we can't keep, keep up with financially.
You said it's, the position is not reimbursed?
It is not reimbursed.
So this is driven by the individual hospital?
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
So that's what we're figuring out right now, is that budgeting portion of that with the vital importance of the role and advocating that within our organization, which we definitely have, but from a legislative body to, I think, in order to drive some of these measures that we have been all day talking about. I do think that this role and being almost a standard of care would help facilitate a lot of these areas.
I'd like to speak a little bit about it. Well, we're not nurse navigator or navigator positions. Within Sullivan County, and I say this cautiously because Sullivan County usually is bottom of the barrel with everything, we are lucky enough that we still have a certified home health agency. So our maternal child health program actually is a subsidiary of that CHA. So we provide prenatal visits, postnatal visits, and then newborn, and until really mom and family agrees to discharge from nursing services. So that might be a few weeks postpartum, that might be months postpartum, depending on what their situation is. If there's substance use or mental health situation, they might stay with us a little bit longer. So it's nursing service, it's nursing assessment. So our nurses are also CLCs. We're teaching breastfeeding, providing breastfeeding support. We're looking for those concerning factors that might be missed, because maybe mom isn't having milk let down, and we're not realizing what's going on. And then we talk about her menstrual cycle, and we say, "Oh, well, I'm clotting a lot." Okay, maybe there's something going on in utero that we can assess and report to the doctor and find out, maybe mom is having some uterine postpartum problems. So having, every local health department has to have a MCH program. It's a core program. So utilizing your local public health department, and I think more funding going to the local public health departments, to have nurses spend more time pre and postpartum in those visits. And I can tell you firsthand, the biggest challenge behind it is getting insurance authorization. For us, that's a CHA. Medicaid MVP is wonderful. They will give me all sorts of authorization. Fidelis, not so much. I can have a mom that has severe postpartum depression, and I'll report, doctor will report, it's diagnosed, it's an ICD-10 code, and Fidelis will say, "Well, that's not really a postpartum need or a need for home visiting nurse services." We need to open up the horizons and the mindset of our insurance companies and say, "Hey, yes, this is all part of that preventive care." So if we're there to monitor and check on these women and be the eyes and ears for the doctor, especially in our rural communities. Sullivan County, we have two facilities, Crystal Run, that's private and corporate, and Sun River Health. You don't know which one of those doctors is going to deliver you. People are not showing up for their postpartum appointments. They have no transportation. Every socioeconomic disparity is in their way, blocking them from getting that care. But if we can go to the home and we can be the eyes and ears for the physicians, we should better utilize that. So I think across the board, we need to look at our local health departments and get those MCH programs up and running.
You know, you're raising some valid points. I was just saying to Senator Brooke that we often hear that not just simply access to insurance, but even once you have it, denials that people get, or they're getting hit with very large bills.
Yes.
That they didn't anticipate, which also creates barriers to, to care. And so I appreciate you lifting that up. I know we didn't talk about it, but most certainly, we talked about this larger subject of workforce shortage, and we know that nurses are, often come up in that conversation. So I'd love for you to elaborate on kind of what are some things that you all are seeing at your organization that are helping to address that challenge? And then also to my question with regards to the Maternal Dignity Act.
Sure. So for my 15 years at Sullivan County Public Health, eleven, I was the boots-on-the-ground the one and only maternal child health nurse for the entire county. Since going into supervision, I now have an LPN and an RN, and I'm actively looking for another RN. Challenges are, in the local county, is that our pay rate is significantly lower than hospitals or private agencies. So who's going to start at $64,000 a year as a new RN when they can start at 90-plus in a hospital setting, and they're willing to travel further away? So again, looking at increased Medicaid reimbursement to CHAs, and I can maybe then, if we have an increased Medicaid reimbursement, I can offer higher salaries. So it is a challenge to find those folks. We have partnered with the local colleges, SUNY-Sullivan. So I am the only maternal child health rotation for clinical for our local SUNY-Sullivan nursing program. There is no pediatric floor at our local hospital, so their only pediatric care is through, coming through public health and following my nurses. That is problematic. They have to travel an hour to two hours to get that clinical training in. So partnering with them and then, you know, trying to get them to, it's challenging in public health because, or in the CHA, sorry, you have to be an experienced nurse. You have to have, you know, you're in someone's home in the middle of nowhere with no cell service. If there's a crisis occurs, you've got to be able to handle that, right? So it's challenging to get a new grad into this role. You want the more experienced person, but following them and then providing mentorship and leadership and our partnerships with the local hospital, with Garnet Facility. I'm hoping that that's going to increase building our MCH program and our nursing program.
And then the dignity, the Maternal Dignity Act, if you just wanted to add a couple more pieces there. I know you didn't get a chance to finish your, your point there.
One of the things I didn't mention is that New York State Department of Health already has very good clinical guidelines calling for informed consent with questioning, screening, as well as laboratory testing, and guidelines that say very clearly that a positive indication of substance use does not require a referral to the state central registry, Child Protective Services. People may use different terms around the state or any other agency. And it's very important that what we're doing is, we're doing what's the, what should be the standard of care. There are some states that have more punitive approaches built into the law with mandatory testing, mandatory reporting, mandatory separation, and other states that may be ahead of us with voluntary, you know, consent, et cetera. And we see that outcomes are better. How are we going to reverse the high overdose death rate that was reported earlier in New York City if someone with a substance use disorder is afraid to, to talk about it with their doctor? We need to strengthen the relationship with the doctor and the whole team as, and then address issues as they're there. If it's use, it may be more educational and stopping usage. If it's a use disorder, there are various treatments that reduce risk, just like many other conditions that may make a pregnancy high risk.
Thank, thank you. Did you, I know we have to wrap, but just wanted to add.
I just wanted to add something to that. We have to recognize that the number one cause of maternal mortality across the country is maternal mental health, and that includes overdoses and suicides. And one of the things that I recognize in moving upstate was that I don't have mental health services for my patients. There aren't reproductive psychiatry and mental health specialists. Not only that, they may not be taking new appointments. So even if my patients have insurance, they can't find a provider. We've utilized the virtual platform with COVID, and so telemedicine is all the works when it works. But when you have maternal healthcare deserts throughout the state, and this is where a lot of our patients, I did not know this existed, working in New York City. And I think one of the things that Chanel Portia Albert had said before is that we're working in silos instead of working together. And so we have to recognize that, you know, one, the number one cause of maternal death in Black women is cardiovascular. So ACOG District Two has a bundle on cardiovascular, which provides guidance and excellence and quality care and best practices. But also, we have to also understand that perinatal mental health, one in five pregnant patients, and the most common being depression and anxiety. And another thing that is being looked at is the correlation with social determinants of health with anxiety and depression. So if I don't have a car and I don't have transportation, of course I'm depressed, I'm anxious about my pregnancy. So we have to look at those things together when we really want to improve and combat maternal mortality. We, we cannot have patients dying. You know, one last thing. We know in 2023 that the number of maternal deaths have gone down. It has gone down for every group except Black women. Unacceptable.
Thank you all so much for your testimony, and look forward to continuing our conversation. Thank you all so much. Our last panel, most certainly not least, I'm just going to ask you all to come join us down here. And as you come up, I'm just going to introduce everyone. And as our previous panel is taking their seats, if again, if you have contact information, please make sure you provide it to us. Okay. So for this panel, we're going to continue with additional advocates. We are joined by Mila Flores, founder of The Birthing Place. Thank you, Tori. Angela Olivia Burton, who's a steering committee member for the New York State Child and Family Wellbeing Fund Work Group. We are also joined by Tori Newman, who is the legislative coordinator for 1199 SCIU. We are also joined by Caitlin, and again, correct me if I say your last name wrong, Galbraith? Okay, I got it. Excellent. Government Affairs Manager with the National Service Office for Nurse-Family Partnership and Child First. And is Hunter with us? Okay. Okay, Hunter wasn't able to make it. Okay. So, the mighty Panel D. Okay. So, so I guess I'll go and reverse this time. I'll start to my left with our, one of our great union partners we have here in the state, also Tori Newman, if you brought your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Webb. Thank you, Senator Brooke. Thank you first for holding this hearing. This is an extremely important issue, and we wanted to make sure that we came and spoke on the workforce piece, because that is a major piece of the puzzle. And I don't want to be redundant, I know we are running out of time, so I won't go over, you know, the particulars of who this is affecting. I think it's clear, we know exactly who is majorly affected by this issue. But I do want to talk about some suggestions that 1199 has in terms of building up an effective workforce to help combat these issues. So this is an issue of particular concern for 1199 SCIU. The vast majority of our members are people of color. So many have or will experience the joy of childbirth, along with the fear of knowing that we are at greater risk of complications, of losing a child or even survive, of even not surviving childbirth. At the same time, our members are healthcare workers, and they face daily challenges of providing care to low-income New Yorkers in settings that often struggle to recruit and retain needed staff, have outdated facilities, and simply struggle to keep their doors open. So we appreciate the Senate holding this hearing at the same time it is deliberating its one-house budget, because equity is a factor contributing to maternal mortality. Whether or not we, New York, decides to fully fund our safety net providers will reflect our commitment to improving maternal health for low-income New Yorkers. The healthcare workforce crisis is well-known, and the 1115 waiver is a major investment in growing this workforce. However, we can do more, and there is no guarantee the Trump administration will renew that waiver. So we need to establish more permanent focused efforts to grow a diverse workforce by making permanent substantial investments in healthcare workforce training, providing adequate supports to encourage low-income people and people of color to participate in workforce training. A study done by the National Institutes of Health shows the lack of diversity in the workforce being a major contributing factor in desperate maternal outcomes. Workforce training includes tuition assistance, stipends, tutoring, childcare, and other supports that are a strategy that can combat, combat this issue. Also focusing on job titles related to maternal care, bringing in more nurses, doulas, midwives, and prenatal support workers. Emphasizing recruitment of incumbent workers such as nurses aides, LPNs, and home care workers who tend to be low-income and have already demonstrated a commitment to working in healthcare. So pushing them forward and getting them better trainings, pushing them to be LPNs and RNs, those titles are already a great place to start. Finally, New York should devote more resources to recruiting maternal health workers in communities of color, as the data shows that race trumps income when it comes to maternal mortality. I appreciate the attention the Senate is bringing to this important issue, and I hope this commitment will be reflected in permanent investments to grow a diverse healthcare workforce.
Thank you, Tori. Our next panelist?
Press a button. No? Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify today. My name is Angela Olivia Burton, and I am a community lawyer, co-chair of the narrowing the front door to New York City's child welfare system, member of the statewide child welfare, I'm sorry, Child and Family Wellbeing Fund Working Group, which is composed of people impacted by the child welfare system, organizers, doulas, social workers, and children's and parents' rights organizations. I'd like to give special thanks to Jindu Obi Ofuma and Jasmine Wally for helping me to prepare this testimony. I want to bring this, to this committee's attention, the Child and Family Wellbeing Fund legislation, which is A63. Legislation, which is A63 in the Assembly, Assemblyman Hevesey. And we don't have yet a Senate number, but Senator Jabari Brisport is our Senate sponsor. This fund is a critical part of the state's response to the crisis of maternal health. And an opportunity for community investment in this year's budget. The Child and Family Wellbeing Fund is a response to decades of disinvestment in communities. And the corresponding investment in practices and systems that have eroded families. dissuaded people from seeking support and led to troubling rates of maternal mental health and mortality. Particularly among black and brown communities. The work group will be submitting written testimony today with more details about the structure of the fund and the mechanisms. Maternal health is not only about safe, equitable access to pre and postnatal care. But opportunities to live healthy and sustainable lives before, during and after pregnancy. Unfortunately, when families experience poverty, generational divestment from communities and criminalization. They are rarely met with support. Instead, they are met with traumatic and unhelpful interventions like those imposed by the child welfare system. In low-resourced communities, most targeted by CPS, Child Protective Services. People are given access to quote-unquote services only after being criminalized by the family policing or criminal legal system. And all too often, these services involve surveillance, monitoring and prison-like settings and probation-like conditions. And can push families deeper into crisis, poverty and harmful systems through practices like mandated reporting. And mandatory treatments which generate penalties for non-compliance. The Child and Family Wellbeing Fund supports families by investing resources. In communities that have been historically disenfranchised and targeted for government intervention through the family policing system. The child welfare, wow, that goes fast, right?
Give me a couple more seconds here to finish your last thought.
I did want to just highlight a couple of things. That the child wealth, the Child and Family Wellbeing Fund Legislation is meant to address. In New York City, as we all know, overdose is the leading cause of death for pregnant people. Despite this crisis, pregnant people who use drugs still face significant barriers to accessing medical, mental health and substance use treatment. Criminalization by the CPS system only heightens these barriers. For example, medical providers continue to stigmatize pregnant people who use substances. Or who are taking medication for opioid use disorder. Through a practice called Test and Report, which we've mentioned earlier today. And our group also supports the informed consent bill as well. Another thing that I wanted to just highlight really quickly is that in New York City, for example. There is a practice by the CPS Administration for Children's Services. Where they are targeting moms and pregnant people who already have children in the foster care system. Or who have been in the foster care system themselves while they are pregnant. And are, are, have a policy of reporting those people to the state central registry. Just on the basis of the fact that they are now pregnant or have recently had a child. And also have been impacted by the child welfare system. It is a policy in what's called Safety Alert Number 14, which I can provide a copy of that to you or a link to it as well. And this then ensnares families into the system purely on the basis of the fact that they are pregnant and have been involved with the system before. So I will be here to answer any further questions about the Child and Family Wellbeing Fund. But I did want to highlight that aspect of this.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay, next.
Thank you, Senator Webb, Senator Brooke. My name is Caitlin Galbraith. I'm the Government Affairs Manager for the National Service Office for Nurse Family Partnership and Child First.
Oh, your mic isn't on.
NFP is an evidence-based home visiting program. Am I getting the wrong one? There we go.
Just bring it closer.
My name is Caitlin Galbraith. I'm the Government Affairs Manager for the National Service Office for Nurse Family Partnership and Child First. Thank you so much for having me today. NFP is an evidence-based home visiting program that pairs low-income, first-time pregnant women with a registered nurse. From early in her pregnancy through the child's second birthday. New York invests currently $4.2 million into, in its NFP implementations every year, supporting nearly 4,000 families. We serve Erie and Niagara Counties, Westchester County, Nassau County, the Bronx, Brooklyn, Manhattan, Queens and Staten Island. I come before you today on behalf of the National Service Office, our NFP staff and nurses and the children and families we support to speak about the maternal mortality crisis. Everyone has spoken so eloquently about the statistics related to maternal mortality morbidity before. So I'd like to talk about what, how NFP is helping to reduce and eliminate preventative death. So by partnering an expectant mother with her very own registered nurse during pregnancy. NFP helps to identify medical conditions and mitigate the risk factors that can lead to maternal mortality. NFP nurses often are the first to detect early warning signs of medical conditions and contributing factors. To pregnancy or postpartum that can lead to adverse outcomes. NFP nurses are educated and experienced in identifying and appropriately responding to the mother's medical conditions and contributing factors. They complete comprehensive nursing assessments throughout a mother's participation in the program. Which makes them uniquely positioned to identify early signs of hypertension, prenatally and postnatally. And other cardiovascular issues such as deep vein thrombosis or thromboembolic disorders, for example. And continue to inform the mother about warning signs for her to closely watch. And nurses also know how to prefer, refer the mother to additional healthcare providers and coordinate care. For providing critical postpartum home visits to assess her health, the nurse advises the mother when there's a need to seek emergency care. For example, deducting redness or swelling in the leg that could be a sign of a blood clot. NFP nurses also impact mental and behavioral health conditions. Nurses complete model-specific education on mental health and conduct screenings. Provide resources and nursing interventions for symptom relief, identify social supports and facilitate referrals. NFP nurses establish trusting therapeutic relationships with mothers that serve as a protective factor for each mother experiencing mental health challenges. Nurses also assess the mother's risks and needs, including unstable housing or homelessness. At times of crisis when a mother needs to move quickly to escape unsafe living conditions. When she's having problems with a partner or not getting along with family. An NFP nurse helps provide the mother with referrals to homeless shelters and public housing. A 20-year follow-up study of the program shows the NFP is effective at reducing all-cause mortality. Among mothers and preventable, preventable cause mortality in their firstborn children living in highly disadvantaged settings. This study found that mothers who did not receive nurse home visits were nearly three times more likely to die from all causes of death than nurse home visited moms. NFP is a regularly, rigorously researched, evidence-based model with over 40 years of randomized controlled child research and longitudinal follow-up studies. This research has found that families served by NFP experience the following improvements in maternal and child health. Thirty-five percent fewer cases of pregnancy-related hypertension. Seventy-nine percent reduction in preterm delivery among women who smoke cigarettes. Forty-eight percent reduction in child abuse and neglect. And 67 percent less behavioral and intellectual problems in children aged six. Reducing maternal mortality morbidity by increasing access to quality and personalized care for vulnerable mothers and their children is going to continue to be of paramount importance. And NFP is dedicated to continuing to provide and increase our services to women and their families. Thank you again for the opportunity to present my testimonies today.
Thank you so much for your, for your testimony. And our last panelist, Myla.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Myla Flores, Executive Director of the Birthing Place Foundation and President of the New York State Birth Center Association. As a doula and advocate for birth justice, I've witnessed firsthand the impact of our maternal health crisis in New York City. It's an issue throughout our state and nation. And when this subject is raised, there are many names whose, who's, who I do this in honor of. And while black and brown women continue to fall victim to maternal morbidity and mortality, New York has big problems to solve. Twenty counties lack maternity care services. That's a third of all New York counties. Families are forced to travel hours to receive care in many rural parts of our state. And when we zoom in to New York City, the Birthing Place Foundation. We've, we've worked long and hard with an effort to open a birth center. Now, we operate Mariam, a reproductive health and wellness clinic in the Bronx, providing comprehensive reproductive care. We've also piloted Familia Flores, a program which supports breastfeeding and postpartum mental health. And has an apprenticeship component to increase more lactation professionals of color. On the doula side, we have Conscious Birth Collective. Together mentorship program has collaborated with BIPOC doula organizations and mentored five cohorts. Nearly 60 doulas, 20% of whom are part of the citywide doula initiative. And many are also enrolling as Medicaid providers. We're now partnered with Health Connect One to become a new community-based site for training. Since 2020, despite many barriers, we've been resilient and steadfast. Providing thousands of families with multilingual childbirth education. And support groups in partnership with numerous organizations. And via our mobile wellness hub, Womb Bus, powered by volunteers, mostly doulas. And it's worth celebrating the recently passed legislation, paid maternity leave, increased doula access. This is wonderful. And we also must recognize that doulas are only part of the solution. As a Band-Aid cannot fully help a gaping wound. Doulas provide, yes, an essential direct support to families, but we need systems level change to address structural root causes of our crisis. And there remains huge gaps to be filled by supporting existing community-based solutions. I'm here to emphasize the critical importance of access to midwifery and birth center care, which hasn't come up much today. Central components of the Mobilize Maternal Health Coalition is a diverse set of New York state stakeholders and advocates. That have been convening since October 2024. We know there are so many powerful benefits of midwifery care. Many may not know about birth centers, offering a safe, supportive environment for low-risk births. Tons of research shows the increased satisfaction and overall great birth outcomes. And despite the passage of a midwifery birth center bill passed in 2021, intended to diversify birth center settings. It was deemed the number one priority at that time, and it's now 2025. Zero birth centers have been licensed since that time in New York. The original bill, as passed through the Assembly and Senate, would have resulted in more birth centers. And it's disappointing, but I'm very forward-thinking and so is our collective of advocates. And as President of the New York State Birth Center Association, many of the initiatives deserve support. There's hard work happening and a dire need for options. Our clinic, Mariam, has a collaborative team of midwives, OB-GYN, doulas, wraparound perinatal lactation and mental health professionals. We are well-positioned to open a birth center. We have a great location option, multiple options. We're presently a growing in our fullest ability to provide clinical care. And in order to manage the challenging malpractice costs. We've, I'll skip to just the fact that I would love to propose the established of birth centers and developing birth centers. Who are members of the New York State Birth Center Association. We have 24 members. Eight of which are in great position and we would love to have support and funding to attain site control for the property of our birth centers. Purchase malpractice insurance or create state-based subsidiaries to help reduce costs. And navigate certificate of need requirements, which is still a major issue.
So Myla, we're gonna, we want to get to the questions for, for all of you. I'm going to turn to Senator Brooke and then I'm going to ask my questions, but thank you.
Thank you all so much. And Myla, part of why I was going to say let's cut her off because I'm going to ask you about all that right now. And so we're trying to stick to, to our three minutes. I'm very interested in what you're talking about around birth centers. And you started to give us some of the details of what I was going to ask you around what needs to happen infrastructure-wise, what needs to happen regulation-wise. What needs to happen in order to allow an environment in which more of them can be built. I know where I am in Western New York and Rochester, New York, we don't have any birth centers. So let's follow up about it, but for the two and a half minutes that we have. Explain to someone curious about why, why would you prefer to go to a birth center? What are some of the greatest benefits, particularly when it comes to maternal health outcomes?
Thank you for the question. Some of the greatest benefits can be found in a National Strong Start Study. Where they looked at the outcomes of birth centers throughout the nation. And noticed a huge reduction in preterm birth, low birth weight, cesarean birth. And an overall enhanced and improved birth outcomes, cost savings to the state and client satisfaction. So to illustrate the opportunities that are available to us here in our state. We either need to choose a hospital birth or home birth. And that's already a limited in access. This, this happy medium of what's available to us is a, a big missing factor. And one of the things that I think is also important to mention when you talk about infrastructure. Birth centers essentially need certified professional midwives to be recognized, a recognized licensure in our state. Thirty-seven states and the District of Columbia recognize CPMs. Five are planning CPM legislation and three have active CPM bills in the legislative process. New York is far behind. We are overdue. There's been seemingly great progress in a lot of support. But now is the time and having experts in out-of-hospital birth is an essential part of growing birth centers. CPM licensure, or CPM, the education process. Involves apprenticeship and skill-based knowledge. That equips them and puts them at the highest standard of out-of-hospital birth. So it would be honestly concerning, as much as I want more birth centers to exist. If CPMs who specialize in this birth setting are not also recognized.
Sorry, can you say again, CPMs? Is that what it was?
Certified professional midwives.
Okay, certified professional midwives that we do not have programs for in New York State, but 35 states do.
Thirty-seven do.
Thirty-seven states do. Okay, I'd love to follow up with you on that. Thank you so much.
Okay, so my question, and thank you all so much for your testimony. As I was listening to all of you, the theme that kind of resonated with me the most of, of all the things you all were saying is that. As a state, we, we need to strike a balance with safety and services. And what I mean by that is whether you're talking about workforce development issues as it pertains to whether it's. Nurse shortages, other provider shortages and, and access. And even in the services that are being rendered and what people are experiencing. And so I was wondering if you all could just, from your respective experiences, kind of lean in on that question of. Where do we, where could we as a state strike more of a balance when it comes to these measures? I think about what you were, were sharing with regards to CPS and how that gets involved. If you are a foster parent, most of the reporting that happens, as you mentioned with the well-being fund. Again, workers themselves and of course, having more practitioners that could be certified in the areas of midwifery and just other considerations. So with the time we have left, if you all could just lean in on like, what would be some recommendations or next steps that we could take? To try to strike that, that balance, if my, my question makes sense to, to all of you.
If I could just clarify one point with regard to the child safety alert issue that I was referring to. It is when a parent themselves has either been in the foster care system as a foster child. Or has a child who is in the foster system. That is then targeted when a new birth is, or when their pregnancy is discovered by the CPS system. That they're then put on this track of being surveilled and monitored and called into meetings. And oftentimes that ends up with a call to the state central registry. Or even if the state central registry does not accept the call as one that would deem an investigation. The New York City ACS will then, you know, contact the hospital if they know where the baby is being born. That will often lead to that child being removed almost immediately from the mom. And so these are issues not only of safety of the mother, but also of safety of the child. And so I just wanted to clarify that it's not the foster parent, it's the parent themselves that is being subjected to this government overreach into their lives. With regard to balancing, you know, safety and supports. I think one of the things that when we're looking at the Child and Family Wellbeing Fund. The proposal there is to really give back power to communities to determine for themselves what safety means. And how safety should be implemented. As opposed to continuing to provide billions of dollars to systems that we know are harming children and families. With these interventions that do not provide services, do not provide supports. That actually increase families' ability to be safe and to remain together. ability to be safe and to remain together. And so the Child and Family Wellbeing Fund is a proposal that would get state funds directly into community-based organizations that are trusted by the community, because we know that CPS is not trusted in many communities. And so our fund would be looking to shift that framework of what safety looks like to have communities through a participatory grant-making process come together, identify what the issues are, identify what the solutions are, and make recommendations about community organizations or initiatives that would then be funded through this process.
And thank you for that, Angela. And then other panelists, what's your thoughts on the question I raised?
I mean, I think that it comes as no surprise that I think the solution is to expand the state's impact, investment into NFP. I don't think, I have to tell the two of you in particular, the wide gulf between Rochester, Buffalo, and Westchester, the, just the distance alone. We're constantly listening to the community and revamping the program to meet the new needs. So not only are we providing a nurse in regular NFP, before the 20th week of pregnancy, we have expanded, we've added an expansion, which is now lay registrants beyond the week, 20th week of pregnancy, and multiples, women who've had more than one child. So we're constantly answering the, the question of what does the community need, and happy to partner with any organization, whether it is a nursing school, a college, a hospital, state agency, a health department, a local health department, expanding access to services. NFP nurses provide, the service of providing services to moms to know when to seek medical intervention is just as important to know when not to seek mental medical intervention. If we have a mom who has a blood pressure issue, be able to speak to her nurse immediately. Okay, is this going to be, this is going to be a treatment you need beyond what I can provide you, or are you okay? Like, this is, it keeps moms out of emergency rooms and interacting with hospitals if they don't need to, or it has them interact with hospitals when they need to. So increasing access to all these services, deepening the investment that New York State has made into NFP would be, honestly, the thing I would recommend.
Thank you. Other folks, Tori or Myla?
So I've really been excited about a proposal that we've been able to land into the governor's desk with the chief of staff and team who presented the request for funding to established and developing birth centers, so that we could basically either purchase or attain site control of our property and the other things I've mentioned, which were helping with state-based malpractice insurance costs, and also the navigation being startup costs for the birth centers and what is like technical assistance. We also have a really great program that I'm very proud of, and it speaks to the continuity of care. And within the maternal mental health components of what we're offering is entry point, and we're very fortunate to have a few funders that have invested in this. And this is our first iteration where people come together to meet and feed their babies and talk lactation. And lactation professionals of color are also getting their hours, and they're trained in mental health screenings. And a postpartum psychiatric doctor at Columbia has partnered to help create this program. And we've really been thoughtful about the entry points of how to create community around this breastfeeding and mental health care. And we would love to have our most funded iteration of this program, which also involves primary care, where our midwives can check in on people and say, in the postpartum, when the time of most deaths happen, can check on them and learn details like, okay, so you were gestational diabetic, perhaps you actually had diabetes. Can we look into that? Or you have pelvic floor issues. So when our doulas, who are like community health workers, who are like trained in these other ways of screening how and where to direct their support, can direct them appropriately.
Thank you. And then Tori?
I think for us, it's really just a matter of investment. You know, New York State has the unfortunate habit of responding to things after the fact instead of being ahead of the curve. When we talking about the issue of getting, you know, the doulas covered under Medicaid, that was an issue in itself. Thinking about, you know, maternal mental health issues, we're working with Senator Brooke's office right now on the LCAP bill, which got some pushback, which is a major resource that can be used in terms of addressing mental health issues specifically with new moms. And I think we just need to be working on being ahead of the curve, making sure that we're making major investments in, you know, facilities and making major investments in our workforce. We have a lot of healthcare deserts across the state. You shouldn't have to be driving miles to get maternal care. You know, we have to find ways to make sure that, one, we have the workforce, that the workforce looks like the people that they're serving, and that people have access to that care.
Thank you all so much for your, your response to my, my questions, of course, Senator Brooke's questions. I know we are at time here, but I wanted to just, again, like as I've done with the other panels, you know, please give us your, I know we have your testimony, but additional contact information, as I said a little while ago. You know, we really want to see what some of the bills we heard today, most certainly some budgetary things, when also, in large part, we also heard, you know, a need for implementing some additional best practices. So there's not as much siloing, because I heard that pretty loud and clear today, that there's a lot of siloing that happens, and there's some real opportunities to break those silos so we can most certainly eradicate this, this issue of maternal mortality and morbidity. So thank you all so much for your testimony and your time today, and the work you do every day on behalf of all of our residents here in our great state. Thank you all so much for joining. And as we close, I wanted to give Senator Brooke an opportunity to offer any additional commentary to the panel, to this panel, but to all of our folks that are here as well.
Thank you, Senator Webb, and thank you so much for your leadership as the Chair of our Women's Issues Committee. But the reason why there were many of us here as Chairs is because this is not a women's issue, as we know, and I'm very, very grateful to all of you, both providers, advocates, folks, you know, on the ground doing this work. I'm grateful that you continue to push us. I'm really proud of what New York State has done, certainly since we've both joined the legislature. I think we've shaken things up a little bit, Senator Webb, and put these issues at the, put these issues at the top of the priority list. But, you know, as I think has been echoed many times today, we don't use the word crisis lightly. We don't use it because we like to. We use it because we are in the middle of a crisis, a maternal mortality crisis, an infant mortality crisis. And as someone said earlier today, they wish they could say things were working, but in their sense, nothing's working because we are still looking at people losing their lives. And so let's, you know, double down on what shows promise, and let's together have the courage to keep pushing for things that have been difficult or nearly impossible to do in the past and make them possible for the future. So thank you all so much for all of your work, and thank you, Senator Webb.
Thank you, Senator Brooke. And I also want to thank our staff from our, from all the chairs who presided over today's public hearing, and of course, our, our Senate Central staff, who also helped with pulling today's public hearing together. Thank you all so much, and we will keep not only this conversation going, but most certainly the work at the same time. Thank you all so much.